We will call the special meeting of the Reno City Council on Wednesday, May 1st, 10:00 AM to order. And the first item on our agenda is for me to welcome everyone. We have a very small attendance here today, but we have a lot of good staff attendance. Before we get started, I just wanted to mention the purpose of today's meeting, and then we'll officially start. Our goal today is to have council to have an opportunity, having digested the budget that was presented to them, to give some input now that they're a little more educated and knowledgeable and have had a little time to process their thoughts. So the purpose here is to give some input, but my understanding is we're not planning to vote on anything. I mean, that's my understanding. And let me ask Vicky, is that correct? So it's really a council input day, and we really appreciate this opportunity, which is unique. We're going to start with the introductory items and the pledge of allegiance, and I'm going to ask Carrie Kosky to lead us in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wow. Okay. Thank you so much. And then we have a roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We're calling a roll for the special meeting on Wednesday, May 1st. Councilmember Breckus.
Here.
Deor.
Here.
Martinez.
Ebert, absent at this time.
Taylor.
Here.
Reese.
Shevey.
Here.
Madam Vice Mayor and Madam Mayor, you do have a quorum of the Reno City Council.
All right. Thanks so much. And the next item is, we're going to start public comment. And let me ask you, Madam Clerk, is there a public comment?
Madam Vice Mayor, we do not have any registered at this time for item A3, but let me just read my disclosure first.
Sure.
We'll allow commenters online to raise their hand if they'd like to, and then we will go from there. So members of the public may here observe and provide public comment virtually by registering through the following link, which can be found on reno.gov/meetings, https://lins. period reno. period gov. forward slash capital C. O. U. N. C. I. L. 05 hyphen 01 hyphen 24. For those participating in chambers in accordance with Council Rule 6.3.11, while in this room, please be respectful. Disruptive behavior from audience members like clapping, yelling, whistling, et cetera, which impede the meeting may result in a warning issued by the presiding officer. If this behavior continues, you may be removed from chambers. If you're an attendee in the Zoom meeting and would like to make public comment, please raise your hand at this time. We do have one public commenter, Ryan Goldhammer.
Okay.
Ryan, please unmute yourself, state your name for the record, and begin speaking, and you have three minutes.
Okay, you can hear me?
We can, thank you.
Okay. Ryan Goldhammer, owner of Noble Pie Parlour. So I'm just joining in as requested by a fellow midtown business owner. And my general comment is that, you know, although I do understand that there's clearly costs associated with maintenance and repair towards any sort of banners or beautification projects and things that we do for the midtown area, or any neighborhood for that matter. But at the same time, you know, those are investments, to me, that are investments in that community, they're investments in those neighborhoods. Those are projects that are geared towards creating commerce, creating tourism, creating tax dollars that are then collected by the city for those types of projects, and those are community outreach type projects to me. And the benefit of them is for everybody. And the problem that I have specifically with trying to force a merchants' association to pay for things like that is, you know, you probably, you might only have a 30% or 40% or less even participatory or participation rate of the businesses that are in that area. So you end up with a situation where you have the majority of businesses that are benefiting from that beautification or benefiting from that, those marketing efforts or banners and, you know, advertising on the trash, on the trash receptacles and things like that that aren't even paying in to the association, but then the association is using all of its funds and all of its dollars to support, you know, for that maintenance and repair or whatever those projects are. And to me, the real benefit is to allow those associations to use their, you know, they don't have, we don't have big budgets. The money and the dues that are collected are probably rather small in comparison to the budgets that are trying to be executed for massive events like dancing in the streets or First Thursdays and other things I'm sure are coming down the pipeline, community cleanup projects and mural tours and, you know, all sorts of other neat, interactive things for our community to do. So in my opinion, it's like, it just doesn't seem a very cost-effective way for an association to spend its money. It's not, you know, there are better ways to allow the association to independently spend its money towards creating commerce, creating events, and that benefit everybody and in turn end up benefiting the city itself. So that's it.
All right. Thank you so much, Ryan, for being here today. Really helps.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Is there any more public comment?
No. With that, Madam Vice Mayor, we're closing out public comment. Also, there was no correspondence received.
All right. Great. Next up, we have approval of the agenda, and I'm looking for a motion.
So moved?
Second.
Second.
Okay. We have a, sorry, we have a motion from Councilmember Reese and a second from Councilmember Taylor. Before we vote on this, I meant to ask our manager, were there any changes in the agenda today?
There are not.
Okay, thanks. All right. Well, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Motion passes unanimously, and we're looking for a motion on approval of the minutes. And which minutes, do we have minutes today? I didn't think so. Okay, good. All right. So we don't have consent agenda, it looks like, and on C, we don't have a public hearing. So we're going to move to item D, and let me ask, I meant to ask, Madam Mayor, did you have a public comment that you wanted to make?
I don't have a public comment. I would just ask for a process in the sense that, you know, I typically like to hear the entire presentation and then ask questions later.
Sure.
So if we could make sure that we don't interrupt Ms. Pam Buren during the time she's presenting, and then we can ask questions later, that would be helpful.
Yeah. I think she's got, she's nodding, she's put in some stopping points, I think, at the appropriate place. And it's a very short, it seems like, presentation overall today in contrast to last time. So we should be good.
Okay. That's fine. I just want to follow along with her.
Yeah.
So hear the entire presentation.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
All right. And then, so we're moving on to item D, and I know a number of people have disclosures, and I'll start myself. This is, relates to the portion of the fee schedule. An item, it says C2, but I think it's later in D. So Madam Mayor, fellow council members, Madam Clerk, the item D involves adoption of the fee schedule. Well, it's not really the adoption, we're going to be reviewing it and commenting on the fee schedule for the city of Reno for FY, and I think it is actually 2425, right? Yes. Doing my best here, John. Okay. Including business license fees. And in my private life, I own two businesses licensed in the city of Reno, Desert Pacific Exploration and Ming Quest LTD. The proposed fee increases on both businesses are minimal, not significant, and will not financially impact my business in any material way. On this matter, I've sought guidance from the city attorney's office pursuant to NRS 281A.420 per N4 per NA. The law presumes that the independence of judgment of a reasonable person in a public officer's situation would not be materially affected by the public officer's commitment in a private capacity to the interests of another where the resulting benefit or detriment accruing to the other person is not greater than that accruing to any other member of any general business, profession, occupation, or group that's affected by the matter. And while I have a significant pecuniary interest in my own business, the resulting benefit or detriment accruing to me will not be greater than that accruing to any other member of any general business, profession, or occupation. And the fact that I am a business owner will not impact my ability to impartially review and render a decision upon this particular agenda item. Madam Clerk, please accept this disclosure and lodge it on the record for this meeting and subsequent meetings pertaining to this agenda item, which, let me just ask, John, means I don't have to read it next time? Or I do? When we go to...
Yeah, you will have to read it anytime that you're...
Even though they're, I'll have it on the record?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. And then is there anyone else that has a disclosure?
Madam Vice Mayor.
Yes, Madam.
Oh, we'll start with Madam Mayor. Yep.
I know, we're going to sound a little redundant here.
Yeah.
I also, I don't think we are voting today.
We're not, but they, we're discussing.
Okay. All right. Madam Mayor, fellow city council members, and Madam Clerk, item C2 involves adoption of the fee schedule for the city of Reno for FY '24, including business licensing fees in my private capacity. I own the nature of my businesses, or I own businesses, the nature of my businesses require that I obtain a city of Reno privileged business license. The proposed fee increases are minimal, not significant, and will not financially impact my business in any material way. On this matter, I have sought guidance from the city attorney's office pursuant to NRS The law presumes that the independence of judgment of a reasonable person in the public officer's situation would not be materially affected by the public officer's commitment in private capacity to the interests of another where the resulting benefit or detriment accruing to the other person is not greater than the accruing to any other member of any general business, profession, occupation, or group that is affected by this matter. Here, while I have a significant pecuniary interest in my business, the resulting benefit or detriment accruing to me will not be greater than the accruing to any other member of general business, profession, occupation within the city. Madam Clerk, please accept this disclosure, lodge it on the record for this meeting and subsequent meetings pertaining to this agenda item. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. And then Councilmember Reese?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Madam Mayor, fellow council members, and Madam Clerk, item D1 involves discussion and potential direction for staff regarding the fiscal year '24-'25 budget, fee schedule, and strategic priorities for the city, including business license fees. In my private life, I am a partner at the law firm of Reese Ring Veltto. Any proposed fee increases are minimal, not significant, and will not financially impact me or Reese Ring Veltto in any material way. In addition, Reese Ring Veltto represents the Reno Police Protective Association on legal matters involving, legal matters. On this matter, I've sought guidance from the city attorney's office with regard to the license and business fees pursuant to NRS 281A.4204A. The law presumes that the independence of judgment of a reasonable person in the public officer's situation would not be materially affected by the public officer's commitment in private capacity to the interests of another where the resulting benefit or detriment accruing to the person or other person is not greater than that accruing to any other member of any general business, profession, occupation, or group that is affected by the matter. Here, while I have a significant pecuniary interest in my employment with Reese Ring Veltto, the resulting benefit or detriment accruing to me will not be greater than that accruing to any other member of the general business, profession, or occupancy or occupation within the city. See in Ray Weber Commission Opinion Number 0947C2009. In fact, I'm a partner, will not impact my ability impartially review and render a decision upon this particular agenda item. With regard to the RPPA pursuant to NRS 281A.0654 and 5, I have a commitment to a private capacity to a law firm as my employer, and the RPPA based on the law firm's continued business relationship with the RPPA. I also have a pecuniary interest in the client fees RPPA pays the law firm. Consequently, the independence of judgment of reasonable person may, in this situation, be materially affected and taking action could voting on those items related to RPPA. In order to avoid conflicts of interest and any appearance of impropriety and complying with the ethics law, I would ask staff not to solicit my direction or budget matters involving the RPPA. Going forward, please let me know when you will be discussing RPPA matters specifically, and I will leave the room for the duration of that conversation. Thank you in advance for your cooperation. Madam Clerk, please accept this disclosure and lodge it on the record for this meeting and subsequent meetings pertaining to this agenda item.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Taylor?
Madam Mayor, fellow city council members, and Madam Clerk, item D1 involves adoption of the fee schedule for the city of Reno for FY '24-'25, including business license fees. In my private life, I own Taylor Made Solutions. The proposed fee increases are minimal, not significant, and will not financially impact my business in any material way. On this matter, I have sought guidance from the city attorney's office. The law presumes that the independence of judgment of reasonable person in the, in the public officer's situation would not be materially affected by the public officer's commitment in a private capacity to the interests of another where the result benefit or detriment accruing to the other person is not greater than that accruing to any other member of the general business, profession, occupation, or group that is affected by the matter. Here, while I have a significant pecuniary interest in my business, the resulting benefit or detriment accruing to me will not be greater than that accruing to any other member of any general business, profession, or occupation within the city. The fact that I am a business owner will not impact my ability to impartially review and render a decision upon this particular agenda item. Madam Clerk, please accept this disclosure and lodge it on the record for this meeting and subsequent meetings pertaining to this agenda item. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And is there anyone else?
Yes.
Councilmember Breckus?
Yeah, I'm one of, I think, last count, 50,000 business license holders have an interest in one, too. So city attorneys deem that we disclose on this related to the fee schedule. Madam Mayor, fellow city council members and Madam Clerk, item C2 involves adoption of the fee schedule for the city of Reno for '24, including business license fees. In my private life, I am a partner of LMAJ LLC, which is a real estate partnership for 316 and 318 Basser Street. The proposed fee increases are minimal, not significant, and will not financially impact my business in any material way. On this matter, I sought guidance from the city attorney's office pursuant to NRS 281A.420 sub 4 sub A. The law presumes that the independence of judgment of a reasonable person in the public officer's situation would not be materially affected by the public officer's commitment in private capacity to the interests of another where the resulting benefit or detriment accruing to the other person is not greater than that accruing to any member of any general business, profession, occupation, or group that is affected by the matter. Here, while I have a significant pecuniary interest in my business, the resulting benefit or detriment accruing to me will not be greater than that accruing to any member of any general business, profession, or occupation within the city. See in the matter of Weber Commission Opinion Number 09 hyphen 47C2009. The fact that I am a business owner will not impact my ability to impartially review and render a decision upon this particular agenda item. Madam Clerk, please accept this disclosure and lodge it on the record for this meeting and subsequent meetings pertaining to this agenda item. I request that it be recorded in the record, verbatim. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. All right. So now that we've dealt with the disclosures, I want to turn it over to Vicky Van Buren, who's going to walk us through a budget workshop. And again, I want to remind everyone, we're not going to be taking action today, but we are going to express our opinions, our thoughts, our general concurrence with the direction or discourage or non-agreement with the direction, or additions or subtractions. This is a time to voice your opinions. All right. Thank you, Vicky.
Just get situated. Good morning, Vice Mayor and council members. Vicky Van Buren, Director of Finance, for the record. I am excited to be here for your second workshop on this budget for next year. So I wanted to just give, at this stage, just kind of give you an overview of what we're going to look at today, what we're here for, and what you're going to see with the presentation. So in this, just as a reminder, we had our first workshop on March 18th, and that was really a super comprehensive, deep dive into all of the financials of the city, what we were seeing for the current year and what we're going to see for next year. And so today, we will not be doing a deep dive into those financials. What we're going to do is talk about any changes from what we already discussed on March 18th, and then any additions that are being proposed based on the feedback that we got on that day. So the first workshop is really that first roll-up where we think we are, to get your thoughts on what your priorities are. Today, we're coming back to you with any changes that we've seen since that point and how we have worked with the city manager's office to provide some input for additions to the budget that we feel will meet the priorities that you gave us on that first workshop. So as we move forward, this would be the last workshop prior to the final budget adoption because we've tried to roll up a budget that's presented by the manager's office to address those concerns of those priorities. So any concerns you have, anything you want to address differently, today's the day to do that as far as the budget and the fee schedule as well. So we'll have plenty of time for discussion. I only have 20 slides to give you those changes and those updates. I really want to get through all 20 slides because we may get to some of the answer of the questions at the very end, and they should go very fast. I did a practice run-up, and it was less than 30 minutes, so.
Okay.
I assume it'll probably be like 20 minutes. But that will give you sufficient time to really give us that feedback to make sure we address any of those concerns before we come back for that final adoption. So without further ado, I'm going to move on.
Dive in.
All right. So when we met on March 18th, I put together this word cloud because I took a lot of notes when we met with you on the 18th. And these were the priorities that council brought up at that meeting amongst all the wards. And so I really liked the idea of doing this because I wanted to let you know, first of all, we listen to you. We listen to what you're saying, we listen to what your priorities are, and we really try to address those. We don't have, as we mentioned before, we don't have all the money to address everything that council needs at one time. We do have very limited resources, and so we do our best to figure out what we can do and work it within the priorities that you give us. So we may not be able to meet everything, but I do think with what we're presenting today, we have met a lot of the items that were brought up as your priorities moving forward. And so with that, I'm going to talk a little bit about these. So at that workshop, the majority of the council members expressed public safety, code enforcement, and parks. Those were the three number-one priorities that I saw across the board from this, this council. Within public safety, the priorities were addressing crime and providing tools for better policing with data management, and obviously providing more police officers on the streets. Code enforcement priorities included parking, abandoned vehicles, noise on the streets in the downtown. And in the area of parks, there were a number of priorities in that area. River Rangers, implementation of the Parks and Recreation Open Spaces Plan, that PROS Plan, and Parks Capital, keeping those facilities that we currently have maintained and also addressing the new facilities like the Moana Pool. With these council priorities in the forefront, that's what we're bringing back to you today. And there are some other outlier kind of items that are on there, too, like the Reno Arch, homelessness, capital programs, other items such as that, murals. Some of these things were brought up as well, but the overarching items were the public safety, code enforcement, and then parks. So that's really, we addressed those, but we addressed a lot of other stuff on here, too. So I just want to make sure we bring that forward. This is the only real review slide that I have for you today on the March workshop. So I wanted to review where we were when we met in March, and then everything going forward will be any changes since that time. So in March, we roll up, that first roll-up, where are we? Where do we think we're going to end the year? And what do we think next year's going to look like? When we do that, we don't have all of the data from the state at that point. We don't have the final property tax numbers until March 25th. So when we met before, we didn't have final numbers for property tax. And then the other thing is, we don't, we didn't have as much data as we have now because we have a couple of more data points, at least from a couple more months of, since that time, in revenues and expenditures. So we can refine some of that stuff between the time we met then and the time we meet now. We included everything in the city as it currently exists, the current services and programs that exist, and the staffing level. We did increases for inflation in areas that we know would increase based on, we know the contracts have already increased, we know what those are, so that was already built in. Capital funding is shown on here, there's no change to that going, from what we're presenting. The GEMT funds for the fire apparatus program, those would be dedicated to that, those are the transport funds. So that was put forward to, put that dedicated funding to that program. At that time, we had $1 million to the OPEB trust and $1 million to contingency, and we increased the allocations to risk, workers' comp, and fleet funds because that's based on the needs of those funds and what those expenditures are, so we have to match those up every year. And we did see a significant increase in risk. And the other two always typically increase based on services and supplies and also the personnel associated with those. So that still continues. We did realign the allocations for public safety for their severance, trying to make that base to more align with what we've seen in the past as far as retirement, so we're not playing catch-up as we've seen here in the last couple of years with so many retirements coming out. And then we also talked about those seven new full-time positions for those new facilities, being the Public Safety Center and the Moana Springs Pool Facility. So to bring those online, we had talked about at that previous meeting what the operating costs were for those and what full-time positions would be needed to run those positions, so those, to run those facilities. And so that's where we were when we met in March.
Vicky, before you go, just the acronym GEMT, what is that?
Ground Emergency Medical Transport. It's the transports that fire is doing when they get called by REMSA.
Okay. Thank you.
So new today, so if we take everything that we talked about on March 18th and we say, okay, what's different today? What's different today is we have revised projections for revenues and expenditures. And again, that's because we have a couple of more data points from a couple more months of data that we've received, and then we also have the final numbers from the Department of Taxation, which we got on March 25th. So the revised revenue projections are about $1 million in total, and I'll go into where those came from on the next slide, but in general, about $1 million more. On the expenditure side, this is where we were really able to sharpen our pencils and really get down in there and try to find that extra funding because when we met on March 18th, there really wasn't a capacity to really add anything to the budget. It rolled up, it balanced, but I really didn't have anything to offer at that point other than taking what your feedback is and taking it back and trying to figure out, how can we fund these better? So we really sharpened our pencil and looked at a lot of the expenditures. And in some of the areas where, that you would expect to increase, like retiree health premiums, you'd expect that to increase year over year, and we build in factors for that. That's one area where I was able to dial that back a little bit because it's been flat for about four years. So even though you would anticipate that that expense would increase, it has not. So I do feel comfortable that we can dial that back a little bit and have a little savings there. The other area that I looked at that really made the big impact is in the severance pays. So in the severance payouts, I decreased those by a million. And so the reasoning behind that is because, two factor. Right now, the timing of the academies and how long those positions remain open is really creating a little bit more salary savings than we've seen in the past. And so with that salary savings, we can cover some of those unanticipated severance payouts. So I'm comfortable with that. The second factor on that is better costing tools. We have a labor costing software that it's, I think this is the third year we've had it, but the first year it was, it was used, but it wasn't the big tool that it is now. And so what that does is allow us to accurately cost the labor groups as we move through in the labor costing. And that's really been important for us in the special pay realm because all of the special pays for our public safety members were very hard to get a handle on. And now that we're able to cost those at the appropriate level, we do see significantly more savings when those positions are vacated or some turnover occurs. So with those two factors, I did dial back severance a little bit. I still kept the severance increased, and so for police, it's increased, let me check minutes here, for police, it's at $900,000, and then $600,000 for fire. So that's still increasing the police severance from last year from $2... So that's still increasing the police severance from last year from two, by $250,000, and then for fire, by $300,000. So we're still increasing it, and I believe that's the appropriate level where we need to be based on the other factors that I just mentioned. The other big item on here change is we are recommending no allocation to OPEB trust this year, which would be $1 million. The reasoning for that is because we just don't have any other capacity anywhere else. There's really not another space for us to fit some of the things that meet your priorities and be able to accomplish those without decreasing that contribution. And so last year, we did forego that contribution, and we would be foregoing it this year, too, if all of the items that we're presenting to you meet your needs, and that's what you want to move forward with. So if you look at these items on here, we end up with $4.5 million in extra money, and it's not really new money, really only the new money is the, is the $1 million in new revenue. The other money, the other three and a half, is just, we've sharpened our pencils and figured out ways to save in other areas, and then a million of that, obviously, is OPEB. So we're still kind of squeezing this budget, and we're making it work, but in the end, it is still a balanced budget, it still works, everything still moves forward as we had talked about before. We're still going to balance that budget and keep that 15% fund balance with what we're presenting. So if we look at general fund revenues, in the general fund, this is the $1 million, just explaining to you where those differences came from. We got the new numbers from Department of Taxation on March 15th. In property tax, you'll see the blue line was the original amount that we talked about in March, and then the green line, that's where we are today. So property tax went up by about $1 million. But C tax, we got the January, and actually, we just got February yesterday for C tax. It's actually gone down a little, January went down a little bit for C tax, but we expected that, we talked about that before, we thought it would, because consumer spending for January nationwide was down. So we anticipated that. February was right on budget. I anticipate that March will be right on budget as well. Consumer spending for March nationwide was back up again, and we tend to follow those exact same trends. So what I did was I dialed back C tax a little bit in the current year by $1 million, based on how we're currently trending. Right now, we're about 0.8% below budget, which is about $500,000. If we continue that trend, we'll be about $1 million below budget in the current year. That has an impact on next year as we build it, because we build that based on how we think we're going to end the current year, and that growth over that. So what this is telling you here is property tax went up by $1 million, but C tax went down by $1 million. It's a net wash between those two. Really where we're picking up that extra $1 million is between franchise fees and business licenses. Those, after I've looked at those again to see how those are trending in the current year and how that goes into next year, those are actually trending a little bit higher than what I had. So between those two, really, we're seeing about $1 million extra, and that's where that's coming from. Total budget, general fund, $312 million. Total budget for expenses, $312 million, balanced budget. You really don't see much change on this slide, again, the original, the blue, the green, where we are today. You don't see much change on here, because a lot of the change that we found, the space that we found to build out some of your priorities, was in expenditures. So we've placed one expenditure with another expenditure in order to keep that budget balanced and to keep us where we need to be on track. So with this budget, we've proposed the addition of 31 new positions. So seven of those positions, we already talked about, and I'm not going to spend a lot of time talking about those again today. We talked about in March. Those seven would be for the new facilities that are coming online, and those positions are needed to ensure that we can get those facilities online and maintain those facilities. Public safety has 12 of the total positions that are being recommended, and parks and recs, eight. Again, these are meeting council's priorities as far as, public safety is number one, parks and recs. And the real idea behind this is because even though that wasn't technically brought out as we need more HR people or we needed more IT, what happens is, was we add to our workforce, we, and we add facilities, and we add infrastructure, we have to have those support positions in some of the other areas to support that. So that's what HR and IT are going to do, are they're going to support the people we're adding, and also support the facilities that are actually coming online. So we're going to go through each area, so you'll know exactly what the positions are and what's being proposed. So public safety, there'll be 10 police officers are being proposed. So you'll have a police team, that's six police officers and one sergeant, and those would start the academy in January, that's consistent with their academy schedule, so that's why that's been set that way. We have one lieutenant to help in the management there of that team, and then one crime analyst, which meets that goal of the tools for better policing. This is the crime analyst that the chief has talked about before, that's been so critical, and her being able to redefine how she deploys the police. And then we have the criminalist technician, and this is support for their forensics program, and then a supply increase for that forensics program as well, to go ahead and be able to do the things that they can do onsite without having to send some of those things over to the county. For fire, we have one position proposed, and that's a management analyst, and it's to support that EMS program, that transport program. As I've seen that come online, they need some more office kind of help for that, to do that program, and so that's what this position would do. There's some extra money here for maintenance of their exhaust system at the stations themselves. It's not that they don't have these systems, it's just they need some additional funding for some maintenance, it's not a lot, $40,000. And then another $15,000 for the on-call fire, and that's really to have that extra on-call support for the July and August busy season. Again, only $15,000 there. And then lastly on this page would be one public safety dispatch. This is a change from what was on the staff report. The staff report had the same dollar amount, but initially, the department had requested that they get this, to do it overlap, so when someone retires and someone new comes in to fill, they could overlap that position for training. They do currently have some capacity to do that, because when someone retires or leaves, there's some vacancy savings there, so they do have capacity to do that. They were asking for a little more capacity for it. Once this was looked at a little clearer, they said, you know, based on the call volume and the amount of calls we're seeing, we would really rather have an actual new position, because we can still do some of that overlap within the area where we already have, and we think the new position would be a better fit for what the department needs in order to meet those calls. And so this is a position being offered here versus just an overlap. So in total, you're looking at 12 public safety positions, and these would meet the public safety feature of the council priorities for public safety, and then for tools for better policing, safety, and such. In the arts, parks, and historical resources realm, on the left-hand side, you'll see those seven positions, well, five positions here for the pool, and then two are actually in the maintenance section, and we talked about those before, for the facilities. So five are for the new facility for the pool. We have two river rangers on here to support the Truckee River and the management of that area. We also have one fund development manager, and that is actually the first step of the PROS Plan. It's step number 1.1 of the PROS Plan that was presented to council. And that, that PROS Plan, that first step, the first goal, is a sustainable funding mechanism, and that's what this position is deemed to do, to start that sustainable funding mechanism, to start that plan. Other enhancements in parks, just a few. Sierra Kids Rewards, it's a rewards system for after-school program, $9,000, and then some additional funding for the youth city council and a shared vehicle. Between those, right at $20,000, not much there, but just some extra funding for that. Arts and culture, historic preservation funds of $25,000, and then murals. There was a request for murals, some additional mural money for, I believe it was the California area, some murals in that area, and potentially other areas as well, but there's $100,000 that's been allocated in room tax for that. In governance and organizational effectiveness, again, a council priority, we have one business licensed technician, and this one would be paid out of RDA 2, so it's just for informational purposes on here, so that you can see how everything comes together as far as a team and how this is looked at in total to meet the needs and what the needs are going to be in the future. In equity and community relations, an ADA consultant and then an intern. And then in website accessibility, these would be tools to ensure accessibility and usability of the website for the public, and that would fix some of the issues that we're seeing currently. And then, again, that IT position and the two HR positions to support continuing to add positions as we build and build up the budget and we build up facilities and things, some of these things impact other departments, and this one is a perfect example of that impact. The other thing I just wanted to quickly highlight on here is infrastructure replacement. There's $368,000 that we've allocated to infrastructure replacement for IT, and this is really for network and server infrastructure replacement, and it's actually a replacement program. It's similar to what we're doing for the fleet replacement and also the fire apparatus replacement program and building maintenance program. This would be a maintenance program for all that IT infrastructure that we have, and it's so critical. And this is really important, because we have not had this in the past, and it's something that we needed, and it would be going, ongoing in the future. So this is creating that new program going forward and keep building on it. We had talked about this during the last budget cycle when I was here before you then, about how critical these programs are, and once you get them started, to continue to fund them. Economic opportunity, homelessness, and affordable housing, we've really had a great response to all of the neighborhood cleanups that have gone on. So what is being proposed here is a dedicated position for the neighborhood cleanups. Currently, the, the current staff that we have is doing it kind of as a collateral duty, so it's pulling them away from other duties that they have on normal projects and normal things, and what this would do is allow them to get back to the other areas that they need to focus on, and would focus a neighborhood coordinator directly to this program. Infrastructure, climate change, and environmental sustainability, maintenance and operations. We have one fleet manager supervisor, fleet maintenance supervisor on here, and this would be out of the fleet fund. Currently, they have a fleet manager, but they do not have a fleet maintenance supervisor. They don't have that direct person working on the floor day-to-day over their, their maintenance people, and this would be in the fleet fund. And this is one of those areas as well, where when we add positions like police, we're adding cars, we're adding all of the things that go with that, and so it does impact another department. And this is an area where they really feel that they could use some extra supervision and extra maintenance support to support that continued growth of the city. For the Public Safety Center and the pool, these are the ones we talked about before, the, the maintenance tax and the operating expenses. We bring those facilities online, we have to make sure that we have the ability to maintain those and have them properly staffed. Then the last one on here is a senior civil engineer for the street fund. Be funded out of the street fund to support the Vision Zero Program. It's the Truckee Meadows Task Force, and the goal of this is to make the data-driven decisions to make safe, sorry, to make data-driven decisions to make streets safer. It's a tongue twister there, streets safer. With the goal of making streets safer and reducing pedestrian deaths. And Carrie Kosky has a lot of more information on that, if during the question session, you have questions on that, but that is a really great program that they are currently doing now, but they would like someone in the lead in that to really take that lead. Under economic and community development, we have one code enforcement officer, too, and that would be out of RDA 2 to support that team that you're building over there. Last year, council did approve two positions for RDA 2, and this would be an additional position that really creates that right team and mix to move forward with some of the programs that they're doing there. Then we also have one senior code enforcement officer on here as well, and again, it's supporting that code enforcement, you know, those things that council wanted to address, parking, abandoned vehicles, blight, a lot of these issues that council brings up, that's what this is meant to support. We're going to increase some overtime there for after-hours enforcement, a training increase, because they're getting more people on here, and they have some trainings that they can't do locally, they have to actually travel for, and they're not done virtually. And then the towing contract increase. One of the things that was brought up was abandoned vehicles. They currently have $90,000 in the budget that they use for that. When they tow RVs, that costs a lot more money, and so they're not able to do as many RV toes as they would like to do. So proposing an increase of $60,000 to that area, so it would bring their total for the towing contract to $150,000 that they would have each year going forward to make sure they can address those abandoned vehicles. And then a couple of fleet additions, these are based on positions that were being added to the budget. When you look at it overall, there's your 31 positions. Eight would be in parks and rec, and then the other 12 that are the larger amounts would be in public safety. Really focusing on code with those economic and community development ones, and then in general government, those support staff that we need in order to increase some of these other areas. And you can see that, I, I think this slide is a good representation to show you that we consistently added to public safety over the years, too, you know, with, in fiscal year '21, following the pandemic, and when we were in that uncertain timeframe, we really didn't add any positions to the budget, we added a few mid-year. But you can see, we've really tried to ramp that up as we've gone out. We added 38 in fiscal year '22, if you look at public safety, and then '21, and then '20, we're proposing 12, proposing 12 this year. This year, we, we are seeing that flattening of the budget, that's why we don't have the same capacity that we've had in the last couple of years, and we have adjusted in order to make sure that we can maintain that balanced budget. Here's the, just a summary, so you can see where all the dollars are going as far as what I've just shown you. So public safety, it's an additional $1.8 million going to public safety, an additional $1.9 million going to arts, parks, and historical resources, and that's the, the main bulk. You have $1.4 million going to that infrastructure and the climate change and environmental sustainability as well. Fee schedule, you saw the fee schedule, the left portion, we, we talked about that on March 18th. These were the changes from last year to what's being proposed this year. You do have some changes in the CPI, so the CPI is 3.6%, it's the Western Region's December CPI, and that's always based off of that, and we adjust any applicable fees by that, and that's our starting point for the fee schedule, and then any other changes are based on what departments are submitting, what we're seeing as far as changes that they need for new fees and other things, and some of that was discussed at the last meeting. Changes from that, the CPI was increased on the building fees, that was not previously rec, that was not previously proposed, but it was presented to the BFAC, the Building Enterprise Financial Advisory Committee, and they did recommend moving forward with doing a CPI increase on those fees in building that are applicable. So that is a change from what you've seen before, and they did recommend that. Council member Martinez brought up last time, the individual resident parking sign increase, that had really jumped to match the cost of doing that, and one of the recommendations was to phase that in, so you will see that in there. And then in parking enforcement, council did give us direction to go ahead and move forward with the ordinance change to remove those fees from RMC and put them on the fee schedule so that you can review those and update those every year. And that ordinance change is in process, so you're starting to see that come forward to you. Fire had proposed doing something similar, but at this time, they've decided they want to leave them on the RMC and maybe pursue that at some future time. When we look at the general fund, this is, so everything I've just shown you rolled up into the budget, so you'll see that the, the line piece on the top, that's the revenues going forward, and then all your expenditures are below that. all your expenditures are below that. The line being on top of all those bars means that we have balanced budget. When you start to see that gap out toward the end, that's capacity, capacity to grow in the future and keep and maintain that balanced budget. We do have built in here in fiscal year '27, the anticipated bond for the Fire Central Station, that headquarters station. So we did anticipate, based on what we currently know about costs for it, we based the bond on that. And to be very conservative, we based it at the full amount that we think that that bond would be to fund the whole project. That is not the intent. The intent is to save money before then, and then also to use some RDA funds to do some site work, which we'll talk about, and then bond for the difference. But in the event, we bonded for the whole thing. As a conservative approach, it works. When we look at the forecast for the general fund, this shows you the fund balance and the percent of fund balance. And so you'll see in those years, '27 and '28, we kind of go down to that 14%, but overall, we are between 14 and 15% going out until you really start to see that climb. And you see that climb, again, that's that capacity to grow, because we build this model based on current assumptions and current staffing levels. We do build in factors like PERS increases, what we anticipate increases for step increases for staff, increases in contracts, inflation, that kind of thing. We build that in, but we don't build in additional staffing in the out year. So that's that capacity you're going to see as it goes up on the end. So coming up, we are down to the last few slides. So coming up, May 22nd, again, is that that's going to be the public hearing for the budget and the fee schedule adoption. So we will take your feedback from today. Anything that you don't see on here that you want changed, that you want new, there is, there's really no new money. So we can, if there are things that you want different, we can look at potentially, how can we fund that? But we may have to look at changing some other things that maybe were proposed in order to do that, because this is built out balanced. And in order to keep it balanced, we would have to take something away to add something. So that's where we are in that. On May 9th, we'll be going to the Financial Advisory Board, which is next Thursday. And so we'll present what we have here, any changes that are recommended today, and any information and feedback that we get today, we will present to them. And then we will ask them for their review and their recommendation coming forward for the final adoption on the 22nd. June 1st, that's when the budget's due to taxation, so once we adopt, we send it to them on June 1st at taxation. And then in August, September timeframe, that's when we're going to come back and talk to you about that current year savings we discussed last time. That's anywhere, right now, I'm estimating anywhere from nine to 11 million bucks we'll have to spend of one-time funding. And most of that is from savings in certain areas. It's not from excess revenues, it's mostly from savings in certain areas. And so once we close the books and know better what that number is, we will come back to council to address some one-time funding opportunities, because as I mentioned at the beginning of this presentation, we don't have enough money to address everything, especially the larger things that I know are really important to the community, important to you as council. But we do have some options to address that, maybe with some one-time funding opportunities in the future. So when we look at those one-time funding opportunities, again, we're looking at about anywhere from nine to 11 million dollars. We won't know that exact number until we close out the books. Don't need an actual decision on any of this today, I'm just putting it out there. This is the plan moving forward so that we have some funds that we know are going to be available. These would be opportunities for that one-time funding that we've heard from council as far as things we could do with it. Fire Station Headquarters, I put on here, because if we were to, if you were to decide to put money towards that, that would be technically a down payment. Be like saving for your house. Down payment, saving up to make a big down payment before we have to know that we're going to bond in fiscal year '27. So the more we can save now, the less we have to bond in the future. Other items on here, Reno Arch, you could potentially make more contribution to OPEB if you wanted to. In the current year, we have, we still have a million dollars in contingency right now that could be put toward OPEB if council would like to do that. Next year, since we aren't contributing to OPEB as proposed right now, the same thing could be done then, too. If we didn't have any extraordinary expenses that come up during the year, you could take that money at the end of the year and put that toward OPEB and continue to make that progress on that long-term liability. Rising Karma Box, Virginia Lake Project was brought up at their last meeting. We don't really have current estimates on that right now, and we actually are working on current estimates. So when we get those, and we're actually working on current estimates for the Arch as well. So in between now and when we come back to you to discuss the books, when we start closing those out, we will have good estimates on those to allow you to make some of these better So that is the end of my presentation, and I'm available for questions on things, available to hear comments, discussion.
Excellent. All right, thank you.
Everything you want to talk about, and fee schedule, too.
All right. Okay. Thank you so much. That was very comprehensive, and we learned a lot. I will start with a question. Last time, you spoke to us about $10 million in RDA 2?
Yes.
And $10 million potentially in these one-shot that you just have up on the chart.
Yes.
So I just wanted to be clear, because some people have said we have $10 million. We had talked last meeting about putting the first $10 million from RDA 2 to the fire station.
Yes. And we are still proposing that when we open the RDA 2 meeting. We will be proposing to do that, because that's $10 million in money that we have currently, and it fits the plan that I've been working with Public Works with on phasing that project.
Okay.
So yes, it's two different buckets.
That's what I wanted to make sure. We still have two different buckets. And then this one, you have Fire Station Headquarters again.
Yes.
So what was your thought?
This would be saving for a down payment. So it's just like you're going to buy a house.
Gotcha.
Save for that down payment. The more we can save now, if we set it aside, the less we will have to bond.
Gotcha.
Similar to what we did with the two big projects. Now, we paid some cash, some bond.
Right.
And then we had some grants.
Okay. So if we, I know I'm starting at the end, but that's very fresh.
No worries.
You just ended with that. There, I know that you won't know exactly how much we have in, carry forward.
Yes.
For several months after the budget closes.
Yes.
And so that could be August, September, October, something. I think you close out in September, October?
We close the books technically around October after we get all of the entries made. I will have a really good, I can give a really good estimate in August.
Okay.
And so we could go ahead and have those conversations in that August and September timeframe, because I will really know what it is. We haven't officially closed it, but I'll know what it is at that point.
Well, I'd like to think about something different, and that is that you'll have a really good idea, but let's say you're estimating it might be seven or $10 million for this. But it seems like on July 1, you probably know we have one or two million at least.
Not necessarily.
Oh, really?
Because we have to wait for all of the invoices and things to come in. So even though we end on June 30, we still pay bills for 60 days.
No, I understand the process, but what I'm saying is, you're anticipating today that you're going to have $10 million. And what I'm saying is, can you say with some certainty on July 1 that you have at least $1 million?
Yes, I could.
That's all I'm saying.
Yes, $1 million, yes.
Okay.
But all the way up to 10, no.
Correct. That's all I'm saying. Now, you have some sense that we have one or two or even three million.
Yes, absolutely.
We don't know if we have seven, eight, nine, 10.
Absolutely.
So one idea I'd like us to discuss, or I'd like to put forward, is that there's some things on this one-time funding list that are a little time-sensitive. And one of those I see is Reno Works. We have classes regularly, and I want to make sure we don't have a break in the action. Another one is this e-waste, which is really e-waste and hazardous waste. So we have those projects starting right in August. You know, we've had a whole round that were funded by council funds, but if you're actually having money to put to it, then these are coming right up shortly after the budget, July 1. And then the horse fencing, we need to enter into contracts right now. It's really important to get started, because in August is when they start in with diversionary feeding again. And we had made a commitment to the community that we would have this fence project built so that we would not have this trauma and challenge next fall. And when I say fall, it actually starts in the summer. So those are three, and there might be more that are time-sensitive, and I'd love for us to be able to move forward with some of them that are time-sensitive for smaller amount of dollars while we wait for the bigger picture. So that's just my thought. I have many thoughts here, I want to go back to the beginning, but I wanted to start there, and I want to turn to my colleagues and see what they have to add. Anyone? Mr. Reese?
I did have a quick comment if I could.
Yeah, please.
One of the things you could consider is using contingency. That money is available now.
Well, then that, maybe that's the plan.
We have a million still now. And if that's what council would want to do, we would bring that back with the fourth quarter augmentation, if that's, you know, the direction that we have, and then we could do that now with contingency, but it would take it from, you know, other needs or things.
And how much is in contingency?
There's a million dollars there now.
A million dollars. Well, then that would be a good suggestion. Thank you. So perhaps we could prioritize some of these one-shots out of the contingency that we know that we have. If it gets to the end of the year and we haven't had an emergency or something, it's just sitting there, right?
Yes.
Okay. Onto Mr. Reese, yes.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor, Ms. Van Buren. Thank you for the excellent presentation and for continuing to work with us as we give feedback and then coming back and showing us that the feedback has been heard.
Absolutely.
I very much appreciate that. I find it to be an iterative process. You know, the budget at times can be very frustrating, because, you know, our budget is largely our people, our systems, things that are already in place. And so one of the things that I've found in the time that I've been on council now these past five years is that it is difficult to have massive changes to the budget, right? Our priorities are borne out over time. And so I think you've done a good job of identifying those priorities and also making efforts to fund the priorities that we find consistently over time. For example, public safety. We have consistently, and Madam Mayor and the Vice Mayor and I, I think, have consistently really supported increasing our police officers and providing support there. Some years, we've been focused on construction, you know, constructing a new police station. Other years, we've also really wanted to focus on our public safety partners in the Fire Department. So your budgets have allowed us to do that, and I thank you for that. My goal has continued to be really high-level priorities in the area of public safety, parks and recreation, and then the remaining priorities kind of fit under a broad category. I don't want to get super into the weeds on this pass, and I know that this has been a high-level discussion, but I have a couple of questions. One is, I am continuing to try to figure out our special events. It's an area where I think we have some evolution in our thoughts about special events. It relates largely to programming of public spaces and also about how we energize downtown, right, and how we make sure we do that. I heard one of the public commenters, and then I received a number of inquiries yesterday from public commenters about how we are going to pay for some of those things. And the examples I'll give are flags on light poles, lights during the holidays, different kinds of beautification efforts. And I want to make sure that if our councils prioritize those as things, that we're not essentially trying to have cost recovery dollar for dollar on the small business community that is supporting those efforts. I want to make sure that we are supporting those efforts, because I think that those are what is driving some revitalization efforts in the downtown area. So Mr. Goldhammer is a good example, Jamie from Pineapple Petty Cabs doing great work. I want them to know that we support the efforts they're doing, and so I don't want to see us passing along costs to them. I know there's a cost to our city, but I would rather us find ways in the budget to make sure that those costs are captured in different ways. I don't know if that's through room tax or if that's through different kinds of buckets, but I don't necessarily want to while we're trying to change our entire thoughts about events and events planning. I don't want to go out and do it on the backs of the folks that are trying to drive that effort. Does that make sense?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. And then in the next round, I'm going to ask some questions about these opportunities for one-time funding, and I'll just say, in a vacuum, these are all things that interest me, but I don't know if there's a dollar amount that's attached to any of them, or if we're, because I don't know how I would prioritize this list without knowing both what we have available and what the cost is.
Right. We don't have costs on a few of these things on here. We do on some, we have kind of estimates on a few others, but I don't think a good discussion can be done on this without knowing some of the costs on these. I agree.
Okay, so we're on the same page.
Yes.
I love this slide.
Reno Arch, we are still working on, Virginia Lake, we are working on. Those estimates we have were old, and we are working on those costs. I do believe, I think horse fencing, the Vice Mayor Dewar has a number on that.
The e-waste, there's a number, 75?
600,000 is right for that.
Yeah, and e-waste, hazardous waste, you had 75,000.
E-waste is, e-waste, I had 150,000. And Reno Works, Reno Works currently gets $50,000 every year already, and then what I had as a request was 100,000 additional for Reno Works.
Well, and Ms. Van Buren, my time is up, and I know we've had some back and forth, but all of these are important to me.
Yes.
I think all of them are important to probably all of us or the majority of us. I just don't know how to give you much direction yet on it. It's not that I'm ambivalent or don't want to give direction, but I, it's harder for me to do it.
Yeah, all right.
So actually, if we, before we move up too much further on from this slide and Mr. Reese's comments, I think the broader perspective that we're trying to offer with this slide and talking about the opportunities for one-time funding is that if you didn't see something that was important to you built in to the budget for the next fiscal year, we wanted you to be aware that there was going to be an opportunity to have this conversation. So I don't know that today it's necessarily terribly important to rank or prioritize these one-time funding things. We're just setting up the conversation for a few months down the road.
And we, we wanted to really make sure that we heard what the priorities are, but we don't have, again, we can't fund everything all at once, and some of these things are on the list still, and we're trying to find ways to fund them, and that was, that's the thought process moving forward, that we're, still have it on the list, and we're still trying to find ways to fund them, and we will be bringing back some of these things for additional discussion.
Okay. But at least you're hearing from us on some level of, at least ranking of some.
Absolutely.
I think there's probably support for everything on this list in one way or another, but to Mr. Reese's point, it's really hard to give you some concrete direction without knowing what I'm trading off for.
Right.
So let me go to Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Vicki, can you just go to Slide 5 real quick, please? And what I want to say with this is, I do have other questions, but this, to me, shows me that you and your team and our staff are excellent at what they are doing, because what you, what you proposed and what's revised is very close, and I know that takes a lot of time. So thank you to everybody who is involved in this process. Now, I just wanted to get into a couple of questions specifically on, I have to ask this, because this is one of my specific priorities. On Slide 8, and maybe this is something for Nance, does this get us to our walking, dedicated walking teams downtown? And here she comes. I think you might have answered this last time, but I'd love to hear it again.
Absolutely. Catherine Nance, Chief Police, for the record. Yes and no. So our dedicated walking teams came from the appointed positions that we got last year, and they're in the academy, and we're starting that in the summer. This is adding in so we can continue to build out whatever, where the consultant tells us, where we, the consultant advises, where we need to build out our patrol functions, maybe into investigations, into community engagement. So the walking teams will have already been covered through the prior funding that we have.
So from last year and this year, we have been able, we're going to have dedicated walking teams downtown.
Absolutely. So that's the funding. Last year, when we talked about it, it was five officers, one sergeant dedicated to downtown, and one of the functions of their duties will be walking.
So excited. Thank you so much for that.
Thanks.
Vicki, I have one question for you real quick. Actually, I have a couple of questions. The RDA code enforcement, is that specific to within the RDA 2? Is that code enforcement?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so that has to be within there.
Yes.
And then, OPEB?
Yes.
On one of the very first slides, we didn't fund it last year to what we wanted to.
Current year, yes.
And part of the million in savings for the total 4.5 would come from no allocation of $1 million this year.
Correct, yes.
So let's say we have, and this is not going to be sexy by any means, but we have $10 million of one-time funding. Could we potentially take $2 million of that and fund OPEB? And why, why, or why wouldn't we want to do that?
Yes, you could. You could choose to do that, absolutely.
Okay.
We want to continue to fund OPEB continuously for two reasons, because we want to eventually get to a point where we could fund all of the retiree health out of there. That's still a little ways out, 10, 15 years, still out, depending on how much we fund each year. The other thing is, is if we don't put any funding to it in any particular year, then the rate factor that they the rate factor that they factor to factor in the total liability for the city, which goes on our balance sheet, it goes up if we don't continuously fund it a little bit. And so it's kind of a trade-off. But, you know, from a financial standpoint, I will always say, we need to fund OPEB. But there's that balance because there's a balance between council priorities, the needs of the community. And so that's really only, that's the space that we have right now to really address a lot of the priorities. And so the plan is always to get back to fund that in the future. We could fund it from one-time savings. We could fund it from contingency. It's not off the board technically because I'm still going to continue to bring it back to you to keep putting it in the forefront, but it's really the only opportunity I have here to present everything that's in front of you because we don't really have another source at this point.
Okay. Yes, Dr.?
Quickly, so-
Mr. Manager.
Ms. Van Buren, would you sort of describe the base budget condition for how we handle OPEB now and the rationale for investing in the trust, which I understand is a separate cost above and beyond-
Yes.
-covering the actual expense in a given year. And the strategic value of doing that is that it opens up today, eight and a half million dollars, 15 years from now, 12, 15 million dollars-
Even more, absolutely.
In general fund opportunity.
Because right now- Right now, we're on PEGO. So we have those employees, so OPEB, other, other post-employment benefits, which are the retiree health benefits that some of the members get upon retirement, mostly police and fire. And what happens is we have to fund those in the future forever. It's part of their program when they retire. And so currently, we are funding all of that through the general fund. Whole thing, PEGO. We're going to pay it as we go along. And we're actually doing contributions to OPEB as well, that trust. The goal in the future is we fund that trust to a point, and that's usually around 50% to 60%. You don't want to fund it at 100% because, you know, as people attrition off and people come on, it's, you would never want it at 100% because you can never pull that money back out of there either. Once that goes in there, it stays in and we transition and we switch over to fund all those benefits out of there. That frees up the general fund from all of that funding of the, the PEGO. So there will be a great capacity there once we can get to that point, but it's probably, depending on how we can fund, it could be 10 to 15 years before we actually get to that point to transition over. But I do want to say, we had zero in there. In 2016, we started funding it. And between 2016 and today, eight years, we have $30 million. Done a really good job of putting money in there. And, you know, I think a million dollars here, a million, it doesn't seem like a lot, but we earn interest and earnings on that as that's invested. The more we can put in there, the faster we can get to where we want to be.
And is where we want to be like at a 75% level since you said 100%?
Usually around 50 to 60. I typically say 60%.
50 to 60. Okay. That's really good to know.
And I think, I'm going to have to look to Matt for this. I think that's around 70 million. Is that the right, we want to get to around 70 million. So we're about halfway there in eight years.
So for clarity, there is no threat to OPEB as it exists right now?
No.
It's just a trade-off in the general fund and the relative opportunities that exist therein.
Yes. When we can switch to that, it will create, open up a world of opportunity.
And it goes into the trust and we can use the money in the trust or only the interest earnings or how does that work?
You can use all of the money in the trust, which is, are the deposits and all the interest earnings because the goal of, if we get it to 60%, then all the interest earnings on that continue to earn and continue to pay. So that's what equals out that payment in the future. So you get it to that point and it fully sustains it on an ongoing basis.
So this was really good explanation, I think. Mr. Martinez?
And I do, I do want to say that we have Kathy McLeod and she's on, she's on hold kind of watching the meeting because I know Councilmember Reese had asked last time for an expert to talk about OPEB and answer some of, maybe some of the bigger questions that you have. And she is on hold. If there are questions, she has a quick presentation available if someone wants to see that presentation on OPEB. It's very high level because it's very complicated as far as on the financial side of it, but the gist of it is what I just told you, but she is available if someone wants to hear it.
Okay, cool. All right, Mr. Martinez?
Thank you so much for that, Madam Vice Mayor and Director Van Buren. I appreciate all the work that you've done to get us to this point. I'm wondering if you can bring up slide 17. I want to make sure I drive home a point that Councilmember Reese was explaining and saying that first and foremost, our services are through our people and want to make sure that we're taking care of the staff that we have here in the city and making sure that that's what is providing and making sure that we're servicing our communities to the best of our abilities. I'm wondering if Director Koski can come up and talk a little bit about the pedestrian safety measures that you were talking about. I know I hear a lot about that from our constituents. And I know you and I have had multiple discussions about, you know, influencing driver behavior in our city and how we accomplish that. So I just want to make sure we're learning the most that we can about that process.
Sure. For the record, Carrie Koski, Director of Public Works, City Engineer. Very excited about bringing this senior civil to, to the, to the council. And like you said, we've had many conversations, I think all of you have had conversations about pedestrian safety. Back in 2019, just as a refresher, the council did adopt a resolution basically that supported the Vision Zero, which means that we would, the goal of that was to eliminate pedestrian fatalities by 2030 to zero. We have been working on that. I've got a fabulous team since the, the city manager supported the, the department dispersment basically into the, into the four different departments. We have really had the opportunity to kind of dive in to data-driven decisions. And I, and this particular person here would be most helpful putting together the team. And I need someone to lead and manage that. And I think, I think for the community, we keep hearing over and over about engineering, infrastructure controls for safety. There's a certain amount that we can, we can do. We've got hotspots. We know that where those are. We know that they're around schools, around hospitals, regional centers. We're going to focus on those, those sort of areas first. And I'm just, I'm just excited. I'm very excited to have some additional help to kind of get us over the, over the finish line.
As am I. Appreciate you sharing some of that with us. The other point in my last 20-something seconds I want to make is the street banners and the polls. I know we've heard from the Midtowns Merchants Association and I think there's a representative from the Wells Avenue Merchants Association business as well. So just making sure that we're sensitive to that and that we're not passing along any additional costs to our associations that make sure that we have a thriving community.
You're welcome.
All right. All right. How about you, Ms. Brekis?
Thank you. Ms. Van Buren, where is the list of the staff complement in each department? Did we get that?
It was with the meeting on March 18th.
Okay, okay. I didn't, I didn't.
We had all the org charts were attached to that meeting.
Okay. Because one question I had was the River Rangers. I thought we already had those in. So are we upping it to a team of four?
We do not currently have any River Rangers.
We never budgeted for those?
No, we had Park Rangers, which were a little different than these.
Oh, okay. So they joined that complement.
Yes.
Are they, which bargaining group are they in?
That, I'm not sure. That would be more of an HR.
Yeah. I'm just wondering, so we'd bring two River Rangers on in addition to the Park Rangers.
Hi there. Norma Santoyo, HR Director. They are local 39.
Okay, okay. And so they're non-commissioned then? Okay. And then again, the League of Cities, are they budgeting in here? The cities' membership?
I'm going to have to look to Lindsay for that. I believe they're in the, are they in the council's budget? I believe so, yes.
So I asked last year and you, my recollection is said they were in last year, but the manager never paid, made that payment. And so we're not a member of the League of Cities nationally or in Nevada. And so I think that when we go through a budget exercise and allocation in a department is put in, it needs to follow through. And I think the council is lacking on its accountability and follow-up on, and that's one example. A lot of it is positions too. For example, we never budgeted, you know, under the civil service rules or the charter, the city manager by July 1 sends in an org chart, staffing compliments, but that gets changed and changed and changed. An example is creating a third city manager. It was done. Someone was hired. I don't know if there was recruitment or someone was just called up and said, but then it's, there's no council oversight on that. It only occurs when you come up and it's in our, you know, materials going down the state on an augmentation. So I just want to call up to the council. Again, there was even an expansion this year of not exercising your oversight of how you budget. And that is problematic and flawed and, you know, puts your response, our responsibilities at arms length. And that in addition to the embargo to meet with the city finance director quarterly has been very difficult and, you know, prevents me and us from, I think, doing our jobs. So that's a, that's a tough one. One question is, does this contemplate any sale of properties to build this budget?
No, it does not.
Okay. And then just to translate to my colleagues, my feeling is, last year I didn't support the budget because we did not pay the OPEB. And I will not support with my vote a budget that does not build, is built, not one-time money, not rollover, not contingency, the OPEB. I was here in 2016, coming out of the very difficult circumstance that the city got theirselves into. And as part of the unwinding was some fiscal responsibility provisions that we put into place. And it was so sad to me to see those pivoted by the council last year. So I won't support a budget that doesn't build OPEB. It would be a tough one for me because I'd like to catch up to the 2 million. And I would put that in before positions. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you. And then, Madam Mayor, I, did you have some comments online?
I do, thank you. Okay. Quick question. Let's see. Vicky, thank you so much. I'm so impressed, but I mean, not surprised because you're so good at what you do. So thank you for everything because I think you really, really listened and I'm so appreciative. Couple of questions I want to ask you. You mentioned the forensics analysis or I think it's a forensics crime analysis analyst. Is that, could that, or is that also part of a cold case analyst? Because in the past, we've tried to fund them. They've been very underfunded. I think cold cases are really important, especially with today's technology. Oftentimes DNA can be, you know, some of these cases can be solved because of the new technology. So I would love to see, is that the same or is that different?
I, I believe that is different and I will ask Chief Nance to come up and explain that. I do believe this came up last year and we had potentially put some funding toward it. If, if I recall correctly-
Yeah.
The discussion on it was, it's, it's very costly and they have a lot of cold cases. And so trying to determine the priorities of those based on very small funding, it's a very challenging space. And so I'm going to ask Chief Nance to kind of talk on that.
Okay.
So, Chief Nance, for the record, I, the two positions that are being funded are a crime analyst position, which can help in all avenues of crime, whether it's previously existing crime or crime that's happening right now and will help us with that data recreation. And then the forensic side of that is a lot so that we can do our own scene processing and then manage fingerprint evidence that we have the equipment for now and ballistic evidence in-house. So it's releasing us from some of the stuff that we're sending over to Washoe County at this point. As far as the cold case questions go, the build-out of adding officers to this and the, knowing that we're now staffing downtown, we're creating this patrol staffing model that is a little bit different. When we add these officers in, it's going to allow us to add into investigations and to different places, which once we fill these vacant positions, will increase our ability to have additional investigators, which will expand our ability to have the cold case side of it. As far as the DNA evidence goes and the need for funding of that, a lot of that can be covered and we have sent multiple cases out this year for DNA analysis and to continue those investigations. So we are actively working several cold cases that are, have been prioritized based on the ability to identify the evidence in them. And then we have had the ability to send those cases out for DNA examination and we're not sure what the results are going to be obviously, but we'll continue to evaluate those as they come back.
So are the cold cases a priority then? Because it sounds like this is sort of all encompassing because there's a lot going on here because you're talking about DNA, you're talking about crime analysts, but like specifically to cold cases, because I still think there should be a part-time position or some, some allocation dedicated strictly to cold case funds. In the past, I've put some of my contingency funds to certain cases of DNA, but I think it should be specific so that it's not fragmented. What's your thought?
We do have some specific retirees that are working on cold cases currently and we are prioritizing the needs of those. We do not have a dedicated cold case investigator at this juncture. Part of that is because of the vacancies that we do have in the department. And we have 13 investigative positions that are vacant currently that we're hoping to fill either with people that are coming out of the academy in this cycle or through the next cycle. So that once those current vacancies are filled, we'll able to put more energy into things that happened in the past. Unfortunately, with the staffing levels and investigations right now with the priorities being patrol downtown and making sure that those are fully staffed, the investigation side of it is more challenging. And as we build that out and fill those vacancies, we will have more ability to investigate cold cases.
Yeah. I just worry because I would imagine, I mean, you would know this better than I would. I'm not a police officer, but obviously I would imagine with cold cases especially, you know, if those crimes are not solved, typically I would think that the propensity for someone to continue to commit crimes would be similar. So I always look at it as a prevention as well. So, but it also sounds like, and correct me if I'm wrong, that you have dedicated retired police officers in that space, at least part-time anyway?
Currently, we do, yes.
Okay. And, and that will stay the same, correct?
Yes. None of that is changing.
Okay.
And as these cases that we've identified as becoming higher priority based on investigative abilities right now come to the surface, and those can change at any given time for a variety of reasons, we do dedicate resources to that to ensure that we are working on them. So it's not that it's not a priority, it's just that it's one of the many priorities of the investigative team.
Okay. Thank you so much. I think, Vice Mayor, I probably exhausted my time. I have more questions, probably like everyone else does, so I will send it back to you.
All right. Thank you. And, and we're going to do, you know, some extra round, whatever, whatever it takes to get through this. But I want to follow up on your point, Madam Mayor. I think it is really important to work on the cold cases. And one idea that we could propose, we were informed by our budget director, our finance director, that we do have money in contingency. And I think it would only maybe take 100 grand to get started on these cold cases. At least that's what I understand from staff. And maybe that's-
I agree.
And maybe that's, that's a way of, of getting there, you know, starting to get there. I mean, and I, I think that's something we could ask staff to look at.
Definitely. Thank you.
Okay. And, and Vicky is nodding yes, so.
Hi. On my list.
Very appreciative, Vice Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. And then for my, myself, I, um, you know, I have a couple buckets that I just wanted to talk about and since no one's talked about it yet, I, um, I thought that we should talk a little bit about sustainability and that includes the trees as well. I had asked staff about adding to our budget for tree maintenance and that's something we can contract out without adding a staff. I had suggested a hundred grand, but that's just a sort of a target. It could be less, it could be more. But in this, the reason I, and, and the other thing is that we lost a tree inspector a long time ago in the recession. A lot of my work, just for our other council members, for 10 years, I've been trying to build back things we lost. That's why I worked on the historic resources person. We once had them, we lost them. Landscape maintenance, I mean, landscape architect, we lost them. We're halfway there. We looked at, um, you know, adding some additional positions that we lost. And one of those is this tree inspector. So I don't know what it would be called in today's job description, but it's a position that we're just trying to recapture. Another example is a parks planner. And we started that back with the ARPA funds. You know, we were, got a parks planner on staff for two years with grant funds. And I think the idea is to inch into picking that up in a couple of years with general fund dollars. So why am I talking about this? Well, just today, there was an article about air quality. And the title of the article, I was just going to bring it up, it says Reno makes worst air quality list in annual report card. So not only are we the fastest warming, but now our air quality, and I've known that we haven't met air quality standards for 40 years, and this is a job of the Northern Nevada Health District to monitor. And they are in this article. And it is brought up time and again in the article that trees are one of the biggest ways we can address it. And the air quality matters, and I'll just give you a quick example. Once upon a time, Starbucks was looking at putting in a manufacturing facility here. And once they looked at where our air quality was, it became apparent that they were going to add, have to add a lot of things on their manufacturing to clean up the air. And it was too expensive, what was being required of them. It was basically their project and taking us back. They ended up moving down to Minden. And it's just, uh, this air quality analysis takes in us, Carson City and Fernley as a big region. And the big issue is particulates and ozone. And so I would just like us to continue focusing on, I know we've been working on it for 10 years, you know, since we started Relief Reno. But it's, it's more important than ever with Reno continuing to top the charts as the fastest warming and Reno also topping the charts for bad air quality. These two things are tied. And I would just like us to, to see us add some things that are in the sustainability plan that we haven't been able to address in either ordinance or additional staffing. We, we did get a person to work with Suzanne, which was awesome, but we need to take a next step, in my opinion. So I'm also over, but I just, they, this ticks a few boxes for me. It's a tree maintenance, I had recommended 100K, a tree inspector, which is just a recovering, a lost position. And again, the last thing in the sustainability world I'd like to add is to work on EV charging. This is something we've brought up for about five years. And it's, it's very current in my mind because yesterday I went to what's being called the greenest building in Reno. And that is a brand-new building that was designed by Cassexis. It's an apartment complex and it has reached what's called LEED gold standard. Has water conservation, solar panels, energy efficiency, you name it, they put it in there. And apparently for not much more cost than it takes to build any other apartment building. So what they did do is they put in 25% of their parking lot for EV charging. And we don't have an ordinance on that today. We don't have a plan. It's later, it's planned to be later. But I think those are some things I'd like to see move up on the list. All right. Back to you. And I know that Councilmember Reese had mentioned to me wanting to know more about OPEB. And I didn't know, were you actually wanting the full presentation or were you want to just make comments or?
Well, I have some comments about it.
Okay.
And then we'll see Ms. Van Buren if our expert needs to jump in.
Okay.
And so obviously I think OPEB is a very complicated issue. It's, it perhaps maybe is going to outstrip our ability to have a coherent conversation in this format. So maybe what I would propose is that we have maybe a standalone briefing on OPEB so that people feel that they have enough information to make the evaluation. For my part, I will not support a budget this year that funds OPEB. And the reason why is because it's a, we've had some flat and down year budgets, or relatively flat, I'll just say, the last several years primarily related to our going through and then coming out of COVID. And it is a very important thing to meet our obligations to retiree health, no doubt. But there's lots of different ways that that's done. And certainly we didn't dig the hole in the few short years that we've been here. We're essentially dealing with the fact that prior council iterations did not fund it at a certain level. And also there's a changing way in which accounting standards have changed. Gatsby has certainly changed around OPEB. Also, our actuarial understanding of what those unfunded liabilities are evolves over time as our workforce changes. And so like you, I, I think you're being very kind to say that yes, in a very fiscally mature way, we would fund it every year to some extent. But there are also years in which we just have to sort of double down on our other priorities. I'm not suggesting that we should never fund OPEB ever again. That would be foolish. But I'm also saying that we have to use the tools we have in the toolbox and be thoughtful and responsive to the economic conditions we find ourselves in. So were we in a year where we're having banner years? Yeah, let's fund it and maybe catch up. But it doesn't have to be the straw that breaks the camel's back in any one particular year. And like I said, I just think that given our flat year this year, it is an unnecessary expense that we could use elsewhere to fund our priorities. The second thing is I want to address, and really it's because we're having some iterative conversation up here on the dais, is I, I do not believe that we are getting any benefit out of the national, or out of the League of Cities. We have funded our obligations to the national organization. I understand there's a difference of opinion or agreement about whether we should fund the League of Cities here within the state. We just are not getting anything out of the relationship and we haven't for some time. So I'd rather take the money that we did not pay last year and the money that we could pay this year, cobble that together and use it for something we really actually need.
I did want to comment on that staff did to look it up. We are current with National League. They were paid. We are current members.
Yeah, the National League. It's a dispute we're having between us and the Nevada League of Cities. And we should withdraw from that. We, we do not get anything out of the relationship. The lobbying effort that we have paid for has not resulted in a measurable thing for us. We have good people in-house to run those programming. Ms. Wilsey and Mr. Secconi can handle that without us being involved in that organization. That said, I think we could take that $100,000 and fund some of the great priorities that the vice mayor has talked about. And again, going forward, we should not be paying for the League of Cities. We can use that money for the Riverwalk improvements that we're looking for, for the baskets and the flags and.
How much is it, do you know?
I think combined, it would be about $100,000, $50,000.
For the Nevada?
Yeah, $50,000.
Fifty?
So it's 50 last year that we've not paid because we've told them we're not paying it and 50,000 next year. We shouldn't be paying it in either year. As to other comments made by my colleagues, I'll echo, of course, my sentiments raised by the mayor about cold cases. The chief and I have met, I don't know, six, seven times on this topic. She knows we're very interested in seeing these matters progress and I believe she has a plan for that. So I'm, I'm confident that the police chief knows that we have placed some priority here and that we can make measurable impacts into those things, both through the hiring process and also the testing process. And so happy that my colleagues are similarly minded and find importance in this area. But again, I'll just say that I know Chief Nance knows that it's a priority for us and I trust that she has a plan to get us there. Now, the last thing I'll say with the time that I have remaining is I have looked at this, the opportunities for one-time funding. And I know that we weren't really trying to like vote on a specific thing today. We're more just giving direction. For my part, I think on this list at least, I'm incredibly important to me is RISE and Karma Box and making sure that we have a long-term sustainable path for how to support those two organizations. Doing great work. I'd actually like to see us expand our work with RISE especially, but probably both of them if I knew more about what we've been doing and what could change to make it improved. But that's important. I think there's also room to improve our access to e-waste disposal. Councilmember Doerr and I think I and maybe some others have specifically had to allocate council funds for those things to happen because we'd rather see those things end up where they're being recycled and dealt with in environmentally conscious way than found out in the desert, which I think is what sometimes happens with those kinds of things. And then I, I'm very interested in the Riverwalk improvements that you've identified here and more broadly, the downtown hardscape improvements that are being talked about. This, the purple-y stuff needs to be changed and, and could definitely be done with some of the dollars here. And then the last thing I'll say, but it's not on this list, but I think it could be important and we could maybe use the Nevada League of Cities money for it, is fire consultant to help us analyze consolidation of fire. I think that's an important area that's not identified on here, but could be the use for those monies.
Very cool. All right. Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. I'm going to ask some questions about specific positions, just to get a little bit more information on them. And I think I'll probably need some information from the directors. On the River Rangers, I am, the way I understand that is these are specifically dedicated to the Riverwalk for those, for those enforcement activities or whatever activities they are, different from Park Rangers. So we don't have anybody that's dedicated to the river right now, if I understand correctly.
That's my understanding, but I'm going to call up our director for that.
Thank you. Thanks for the question. Nathan Olia, Parks and Recreation Director, for the record. We don't have any that are dedicated to the river, but it has been the area of focus over, over the last year. And currently we're limited to five days of coverage with the three Park Rangers that we have. So adding this would allow us to move to a seven-day coverage and keep momentum in the areas that we've kind of turned the corner on.
So this gets us to seven days a week with, with coverage on the river specifically?
Yeah. Well, the, the two positions will allow us to move to that with the, with the three positions we currently have.
Fantastic.
But there's the Park Rangers and then the two dedicated River Rangers.
Great. And then I think I see Mr. Woodley with the code enforcement folks, the addition of that, can those be, can those positions help with some of the downtown nightly activities with the addition of overtime that we see? Will that, will that help some of the concerns that we've heard about with noise and compliance with SUCs?
Yes, ma'am. Alex Woodley, for the record, Director of Code Enforcement. You're absolutely correct, ma'am. Whenever we have an additional resource, we have the ability to move and shift duties and assignments accordingly. And we do know that downtown is an area that we need more code enforcement. So we will be looking at that. Yes, ma'am.
Great. Thank you so much. So much good news. And then my last question, or question is I think for Ms. Weisman. There's a position in here for housing and neighborhood development. And the way I thought I understood it, it was specifically for the neighborhood cleanups. Does this position do more than that or what, what exactly are the functions of this position?
Yes, thank you for the question. Elaine Weisman, Housing Manager, for the record. Yes, this would be specifically to organize, facilitate and run the cleanups. That is recruiting and managing volunteers, going through procurement for the vendors. And then also the Bloomberg grant that we just received, this would, position would be heavily involved with the civic engagement that comes along with that grant to actually build the program in the future.
And these cleanups, excuse me, are, are very well attended. I mean, we get a lot of, we get a lot of community participation forms, so I think this is a good, good fit. Madam Vice Mayor, I just wanted to make one comment on the one-time funding stuff. I don't think I would, I don't know if I heard right, but I wouldn't be supportive of any positions for one-time funding just because that would be something that we wouldn't be able to sustain in the further years, but would need to know more about it. Thank you so much.
I wasn't aware there were positions in this one-time funding, so maybe I missed that point.
Oh, I thought you were asking for different, more positions in sustainability with one-time funding.
No, I wasn't. I was asking for them to be put into the budget because a position can't be, you're absolutely right, in one-time funding.
Oh, did, I guess I didn't understand where you wanted it to come from.
Yeah. I haven't identified a resource, but I think that's, it's important to make some inroads. So, but I wanted to follow up on one quick thing you just said. The last thing you said was about the e-waste and hazardous waste. I had heard that, you know, we're, we're about half the places we're doing cleanups are having E and hazardous and half are not. And I heard that people brought hazardous to the ones that we weren't and they were disappointed. And I think that the danger there is taking something they absolutely love and turning it into something they're very unhappy about. And so that's a danger that we don't want to go down that path. We want to keep them, you know, our residents very satisfied. And I think it's too complicated to signal which places have this and that, and it should just be the same. So it's a further support of what you're saying. Mr. Martinez?
Thanks so much, Madam Vice Mayor. I would echo the comment that was just made about e-waste. I know I hear from constituents about, you know, cleanups that happened 10, 12 years ago and still the impacts and influence and good vibes that folks felt when that happened in their neighborhoods. And so I want to make sure that we're supportive of that. I had a quick question about one of the fees. Does zone change amendment to SPD or PUD, including handbook review and certification of the handbook? It looks like this is a new fee and just curious what the fee was before for that and kind of the reasoning behind that.
Do you know which department that one was in? Is that code enforcement?
It looks like Mr. Pingree's coming up. Development Services.
Development Services.
Yes.
Almost. Good afternoon. Chris Pingree, for the record. Can you please repeat that question so I can pull up the proper document?
Yeah, of course. It's on page 20 of our fee schedule under Development Services, the second to last one. Zone change amendment to SPD or PUD. It says adding new section for existing fee line to differentiate between new and amendment applications. Application amendments charge at 50% of the new SPD or PUD fee. Just curious if there was a fee currently for any of those amendments happening or if this is a new.
No, this was a fee going back to correct that it would have started back at the beginning if they would have come in to amend that fee. This gave an, a currently produced document that we could go back in and give them that same $6,400 fee in order to reinstate or change what was, what was done to that amendment or SPD.
And this would be only for approved handbooks that would need an amendment?
Correct.
Okay. Cool. Just wanted to make sure I understood that part specifically. I did have a question for you, Director Van Buren, about the timeline. You spoke to us about when we could make our priorities for the opportunities for one-time funding in August, but I just wanted to know about the contingency funds and when would we be able to do our advocating and priority setting for that?
Well, in the, in the current year budget, we have $1 million in that contingency fund that we have not allocated out so far. And so that potentially from this discussion here, manager could put forward that based on the discussion, using some of those funds and we could allocate that in the fourth quarter, which would come back in June. So it would be funds available immediately. And then if you were to look at even using contingency from next year, we have $1 million budgeted for that too. So that would be available immediately if there are immediate needs that are, you feel are immediate at that point, that would be available when that budget's adopted too.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to make sure I'm providing the input when the time is right. So thank you so much for clarifying that.
Just a follow-up. Could we backfill? Like, let's say, you just said we could use this million that we have now, but then we could potentially borrow in advance from contingency, but we could pay it back from when we understand how much is left at the end of the year. Is that right?
Not necessarily. That's like putting it on a credit card. Because that budget's not adopted yet.
I like that idea, but, okay.
So, but once that budget's adopted July 1st, those funds exist and the budget is approved, well, the budget's approved May 30, sorry, May 22nd, when you approve that budget, becomes effective July 1st. So those funds are available on July 1st, but not prior to that, just because the budget is not in the.
For this coming year?
Yes, for the coming year.
Yeah, understood. Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Breckus.
Okay. You know, I don't need the presentation on the OPEB. I was here when we started it all. And I understand differing, you know, philosophies of it. This isn't, for those watching, it's not much difference from household budgeting. You know, for me, the OPEB was always saving for retirement and it does that, so it helps the outer years. But it also, you know, getting your current year too obligated is how you get in trouble. And we've been in trouble. You know, households go on bankruptcy, cities don't, but we were darn close. And so I'm always like to pay off ahead rather than inflate today, which may take us out of the realm where we're in. Just to counter something else is, my understanding is, we cannot be a member of the National League of Cities unless we are a member of the Nevada League of Cities. So maybe someone could fact-check that because if they're saying we're paying for National League of Cities and National League of Cities is saying, well, you're not a member because you've blown off your state chapter, then, you know, let's, let's figure that out. And I understand other people want to join other organizations, maybe see more value in those, you know, that they use with their discretionary and their travel attention. But to me, the National League of Cities really is the predominant force in the country to represent cities, you know, just, it's, it's kind of undisputable, undeniable. So leave that aside. I, I, oh, and in terms of the contingency, you know, that's just a million dollars that rolls over. You know, I mean, that's how I always think it. If we've always budgeted a million, it's not one-time money, it's just a rollover money. That's how I always look at that. But I really want to understand some discussion on the police department budget. And obviously, we have a new chief, and I've had an embargo for two years to talk and meet with her quarterly. So I may be behind on things, but this concept about her having people on contract, we used to get a readout of all the contracts that were signed, so we could see what contracts were going on. And if she has contracts with retirees or other groups, those are things that maybe have skated over my head, because I haven't been seeing those contracts. Likewise, you know, I mentioned how we hadn't received accounts payable for six months. They used to come on the agenda. Those are gone. I mentioned that at meeting, two meetings ago, and then got six months of accounts payable, which is probably five hours of review. So if we could be more timely on that. But Chief, I want to ask you, you have this CPSM study that you inherited when you came on. Now you have Matrix more on operational deployment. But I'm seeing a couple things, and I, I only have 30 seconds, so I'll end and then let you answer. One is, I feel that, you know, I asked before, where's the path to our forensics lab? Because we, we agreed, we haven't had a workshop on that. We agreed to contract with the county for forensics. At the same time, you're setting up that lab. And I said, where's the plan? Because it feels like if we add positions for your lab that you're standing up, where we're still budgeting and committed to that contract with the county, I really just want to know the plan, because we're, we're investing heavily in this. And then last one is, you mentioned your six positions that we budgeted last year are not out yet on Academy. We're adding positions to come in mid-year. Okay? I really, and then you mentioned other vacancies. And I'm going to ask specifically as follow-up to this meeting for a list of all budgeted right now, but vacant positions and the status of those. Are they out for recruitment or so on? But Chief, I'm starting to see police forces out there taking a step back from adding positions at budgeting, because the body supply, the staffing supply just isn't out there in the world. And I want to know if you're there, because I think departments are starting to go in other ways of building an apparatus around that. So those are the questions is, one, you know, what do you have on contract to do, you know, those other services? Or maybe follow-up on all outstanding contracts you have? I received a copy, because I didn't know about it, of your Matrix scope, and I read that scope of services, so I understand it now. But it, it didn't come to me without me looking for it. So where are you, you know, what's the plan on standing up the forensics? You know, do you have a plan written up? What's your vacancies? Are you rethinking vacancies because you just can't get the bodies in? And also, what is the contract on these other services that you referenced?
I'm not real sure what you mean by the contract on the other services. I'll start with the other two. Maybe we can go back to those.
Okay, sure.
So for the forensics plan, the plan is that we came to council last year with a grant, a one-time appropriation grant for forensic services. And that is essentially going to be for fingerprint and for gun testing, so IBIS. So we will be doing those in-house. The additional person that we are adding into this, the forensics team person, they will take on a role of both crime scene investigation and also and/or fingerprints or ballistics. And so they'll each have a specialty that they'll do, and we able to do those things in-house, which will pull those away from the Washoe County Sheriff's Office doing those things for us. So that's the build-out plan right now for forensics. It could grow, but that's what we have the capabilities of doing on our own currently. And that's what we'll continue to do to keep those things in-house. As far as hiring, no, I am not concerned about hiring. I have an exceptional recruitment happening right now. Just last week, we launched a new recruiting website, and we had 50 new applicants at the launch of that. I will have 26-ish people in the academy next cycle, which I will, for reference, in case you don't know if that's great or not great, when I started, we had eight people in the academy at that academy time. So I'm getting 26 in each academy. We had 19 in the January academy, 26 in this academy. We do have attrition. We are facing the fact that people are retiring. They are reaching age to retire or medical reasons why they retire, and we have to continue to fill those positions. But we have been very successful, both in our recruitment of new officers and our recruitment of laterals. I think by July, I should have nine lateral hires, which is almost unheard of for the Reno Police Department to have in a six-month period. So I'm very proud of that, and they're doing great. All seven of the laterals that we hired in January are coming out of training now and passing training, and they're going out on their own, which is phenomenal. And with that, that's how we're able to move into that downtown team that we dedicated last year at council, where we talked about at that time that these hires were going to have to go to the academy and then go to training, and you're probably not going to see them until the fall. Well, because I was able to hire laterals, we're able to get that team moving out a little faster. We do have to deal with attrition constantly. We do have vacant positions. We operate at about 7%, which is pretty good for police departments. Most of them are in the 20% to 25% range. And after we start this academy in July, we will be at about 3%, which is perfect. You're going to always see vacancies in a police department as big as ours, with over 350 officers. Yet we're, we're going to have vacancies, but we're filling them. And I'm very comfortable with the number of officers that we asked for in this funding mechanism, that we'll be able to fund those and fill those positions in January, so.
I mean, that's amazing.
And the final question was just that one the mayor referenced. Do you have some retired, you have some people on contract?
We do hire, and we utilize part-time employees. Those are, that's normal.
Yeah.
And so we have part-time employees that come in and do a lot of different things. We also have some employees that are volunteers, like our Save Volunteers, cadets, things like that. We have a lot of different types of employees that don't necessarily make up our full-time employee positions.
I thought you mentioned you had some, some of our retirees on contract working on cold cases or something like that. That's what I, that I heard. I'll just, I'll just ask for all the contracts you have outstanding. I just, it's, it helps give a complexion for me of understanding.
We have a lot of contracts, a lot of different things. So for me to go through them line by line would be really challenging from memory. Sorry. Some of them I know better, some of them I don't.
We're going to move on.
If I could just, the one thing is, I, I do understand that the plan to move away from Washoe County is, is really just on those two items you mentioned. There is no written plan to go further and steps further. It's not drafted anywhere.
It's hard for us to decide where, how far we're going to take that out, based on funding, availability of space, people. So as we continue to grow, we can build a plan out better, knowing what our next steps are. It's not something that I don't have an endless stream of funding, where I, I had one-time money through a grant that we were able to accomplish those two things. So we're going to continue to evaluate, how do we do there? What's our next steps? What can we take from county effectively? And what can we continue to do in-house?
And I think the council should be involved in all of those discussions.
Well, it's, it's good to get an update on that, for sure. I really appreciate what you gave us. And before we go to Madam Mayor, I just want to let everyone know the plan. We're going to take a 30-minute break after the mayor gets her questions asked and answered on this round. I had a couple requests from council members. So Madam Mayor, do you have a next round of questions or comments?
I do. Thank you. I wanted to dive in. I have several here, but like I said, I don't want to take up my time, and I know you guys are all hungry.
No, you're fine. I mean, this is what we're here for.
Okay. I want to talk about river rangers. You said two allocations, and I was just wanting to know, can you be clear, Vicky? Because I know that the flood project said that they were going to fund two, and I'm also going to ask for two rangers from RTC, RSCBA, Tom Wah County, Sparks, Reno. That would make a total, I think, 12 to 14. Because I really want to see a comprehensive plan for the river, for safety and sustainability. And we've talked about this for a long time. So can you clarify? Because I was under the impression that our representatives, thank you so much, Miguel, I believe, Councilman Martinez, and Vice Mayor Duer are over there, and we were allocated two from flood. So can you clarify if those are from flood or if they're from the city of Reno?
Yes. These two positions would be dedicated from the city of Reno. And I'm going to let the Director of Parks here talk to the, the complement and how that would look as far as that team, because the other positions do exist that you were talking about, but he has all the specifics on that. But the two in this budget would be our addition to that.
Reno funded.
Oh, okay. All right. I just wanted to make sure, because I thought these were funded by flood. Okay.
Madam Mayor, we, we do have Nathan wanted to jump in here. I, I will tell you my understanding. This is two new ones from Reno. The two from flood are still in discussion, going to come up at our next flood board meeting. So that would be four. And then Nathan already has three park rangers. And so assuming this all comes together, there'd be seven, right? And he wants to go to seven-day coverage. So over to you, Nathan.
And then another opportunity on the horizon is the, the county is considering putting in an item in a future agenda to fund two positions as well.
So that might be nine within a few months.
Possibly.
Right. I would ask RSCBA, RTC as well, which, you know, they know, I've been talking about this for a long time. So everyone sort of has a heads up. Now, what that looks like moving forward, you know, where it lives, how it breathes, might be a totally different discussion. I just, at this time, want to collectively get everyone together to get this initiative going, because we've talked about it for so long. So now it's time to pull the trigger. I just wanted clarity. Thank you so much, Nathan and Vicky, for dedicating those two, because I think it's hard for us to ask other jurisdictions and partners for two if we don't step up first and do, I guess, our two. But I was under the impression that flood had already funded it. And so I just wanted clarity that this was not the flood allocation, which is fine. It sounds like Councilman Martinez and, and Vice Mayor Duer sit over there and will advocate for that, which is fantastic. But other than that, I just wanted to clarify, because I wasn't sure. So thank you.
Okay. Anything more, Mayor?
Oh, yeah. I got, I've got fee schedules, light poles, Reno works.
All right. This is helpful. Okay, this is helpful. I, I thought you did, and I think we all do have at least another round in us. What I'd like to do before we take our break is we have two comments from the public, which I want to get them an opportunity to speak before we break, so they don't have to wait for us to come back. So Madam Clerk, could you share with us?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have Janess Carter and Jamie Chapman.
Okay. Who are you calling?
Janess.
Do I just go over here?
Yeah.
It's your first time, so just say your name.
Hi.
This moves, this one right here. Yeah, so you can speak right in.
Thank you. My name is Janess Carter. I'm the Vice President of the Wells Avenue District, owner of Beautiful Nails Midtown Reno, and an event organizer in the SVP, also known as the South Virginia Plaza, where you find places like Mario's Portofino and Sports West, and my business, Beautiful Nails. And I'm here in opposition of, I believe it's budget item D1, the proposed banner fees. The, the district, the districts gives businesses and owners a, gives business owners and community members a sense of belonging and pride. Like a team, we're our city's cheerleaders. We pull people together, and the banners are a great way to help with that energy. Each district consists of a small group of people that want to see growth in our community. The majority of the district members are not in a position to fund the district, but work hard to gain funds for beautification and bringing the community together, together with, and outsiders to Reno with special events. We have a limited budget that is to last us for a year, and we already give our time and energy for free to our city that we love in a focused area to create a big impact. We raise money to get these banners done and put them up, and we maintain them. It does not seem fair to charge us for banners we work hard to put up by raising money. On Wells specifically, the actual light poles themselves were part of a district movement. A different part of Vegas or California having this fee may make sense, because they have different resources and member, member participation. And it's hard enough already to get 10 people in a district involved to put in this work. Minimally, it would be $18,000 for a calendar year. This is like five times our budget for the Wells Avenue District. The city fees would already be more than who we hire for the services currently to put them up. I am personally someone who works hard in my city, and with past involvement with Midtown District and current work with the Wells Avenue District in organizing special events for fellow businesses in the South Virginia Plaza. I don't get paid for this work, but it's gratifying to see the inspiration that it brings to our city. Things like this in my world hurt, and it's like a blow. I feel strongly that the districts will, will agree to not utilize the polls, because this would not be something that we'd be able to, to afford. In the event that that happens, then it would be sad to see a random advertisement placed there in, in place of community representation. These polls are not a cost to the city, as far as we know, or something maybe that we can consider talking about. I ask that you please consider the hard work of the few to bring energy to the many. And thank you to Devin Reese and to Miguel Martinez for understanding how this would affect us as a whole. And if it's possible to postpone this or decision on this, it would be nice to possibly get all the districts together, so that we can maybe come up with ideas on how we can work together on that, because it kind of came as a surprise.
Sure. Great job. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
All right.
Jamie Chapman, followed by Britten Griffith via Zoom.
Hi, guys. Okay. I'm Jamie Chapman, the Executive Director of Midtown Reno, as well as a small business owner. I own Travel Pineapple and Pineapple Petty Caps. But today, I'm here to speak with you as the Executive Director of Midtown, to talk about the banner pole fees proposed in the 2425 budget, which threaten to severely impact our district and small businesses we support. I know I've already talked to several of you, and I appreciate you guys speaking out today and your openness for hearing us. I know the city council probably doesn't know all of the things that Midtown does, so I want to take this opportunity to tell you a little bit about the cool things that we have going on. So in Midtown, we make every dollar count. We bring the community together with free events like dancing in the streets, and we invest in keeping our neighborhood clean and vibrant. Just this week, we partnered with the Bin Trash Ball to clean and maintain our Big Bellies, clean up graffiti, and clean the sidewalks. And I'm super happy to announce that we just got approved for a grant to bring cigarette receptacles to Midtown that will be installed hopefully soon. We're waiting for them any day. So we take our responsibility to keep Midtown clean and approachable seriously. During our last Midtown cleanup with K T M B, we had over 120 volunteers that picked up 2,500 pounds of trash, and we planted 500 flowers in our flower beds. So we also purchased and installed 100 snowflakes throughout Midtown in the last two years. This installation of snowflakes in 2023 cost Midtown $5,000. That's not even the cost, I was just installing, to install them. And as you probably know, SNC and the city of Reno have been working the last few months to install the new cross-street banners that will display the Welcome to Midtown banners later this month. So back to the reason I'm here, the proposed budget of $15 per light pole per month with an 85 installation and removal fee per pole, the $35 cross-street banner pole per month installation with removal fee of 150, and the $15 per Big Belly Trashcan signage fee per month with $50 installation and removal fees per Big Belly Trashcan, and then the $155 application fees for each of these every time they're changed. Now, this might not sound like a lot when you break it down like that. However, under these new proposed fees and charges, that $15 per month per pole with installation costs and application fees would cost Midtown $35,310 a year. The $35 per street banner fee with application installation would cost $2,450 a year, and the Big Belly Trashcan signage permit fees would cost Midtown $25,888 a year. That totals $63,649, which is $5,303 a month in fees that Midtown, a nonprofit, would be responsible for paying. Not only do we not have this...
Keep going. Wrap up.
Okay. Not only do we not have this in our budget, but we are largely funded by Midtown membership dues. I cannot tell Midtown partners that I'm using their dues to pay for welcome banners and snowflakes. If these fees are implemented, it would not be financial, it would be financially impossible for us to continue these projects. Our banners and snowflakes would have to come down, and the promotional activities on the Big Belly Trashcans would end, which would mean the brand-new cross-street banners that everybody's worked so hard to get would remain empty.
Thank you so much, Jamie. We definitely got the gist.[1731.76] We definitely got the gist.
Cool.
And I wanted to tell you too, I didn't say it in my early comments, but I got your letter. And it was the first thing I talked about staff this morning at 9:00, so thank you.
Cool. I appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
All right. We're going to go to the online comment, I think.
Britten Griffith via Zoom.
Good afternoon. I'm on, right? Okay. Good afternoon, Strike Mayor, Mayor, Councilmembers, and staff. For the record, my name is Britten Griffith. I am speaking today on behalf of the Riverwalk District. As their president, we serve and represent nearly 70 members and our community partners in addition to a member of our Reno District Coalition. So, a quick thank you so much to Wells and Midtown for being representative today. I am here virtually to express our concerns regarding the budget item D1. I won't go into length at this because we really appreciate how much thought you guys have already discussed this into the meeting, but just to go over the banner fees that are proposed. We have been working diligently to make tangible placemaking improvements in our districts to bring awareness, branding, and community cohesion. A main way we have access to this type of infrastructure is through banners and light pole improvements and installations. Since we've only heard about this new proposed fee last night that would establish these fees, we do not know all the specifics, but we are asking today that you put into some thought the repercussions of this fee that the districts would have to take on. We do run on nominal thin budgets, and many of us pay for items in our district out of our own pockets to contribute back to our home. This new fee, which is, we understand it would be a cost to use the banners, other signage, and perhaps even inhibit the use of flower pots like we have in downtown Reno. Thank you again all today for your input, particularly Councilmember Reese and Miguel Martinez. We appreciate you. We understand that through studies and pilot programs around the world how much directional and community signage adds to an experience and a presence and positive sense of place. We know this to be true through our personal experiences in Reno. Look at what some rogue overnight banners for Startup Row did to spark the innovation and entrepreneurial spirit in downtown. The flowers that we hang along our light poles for guests and residents and the special permanent art pieces that find homes throughout the arts districts make Reno one of a kind. To install these type of fees into districts that are run by nonprofits and grassroots individuals would be unsustainable, and we would have to take down our banners and additional improvements. Our hope today is that we can simply look at this item together and the negative impact that it would have. It would cause loss of current enhancements in our neighborhood, and we look forward to working together to bring more community signage that will benefit everyone and a great path for even more permanent placemaking. Our coalition believes in compassionate commerce, and it has been such a fortunate time to build better working together as a team for our districts, and that includes the city's help and the county. So, we appreciate your time today. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you so much to all three speakers on this issue. It will really help us put the budget together, so thanks for making time. Well, now, we are going to take a half-hour break. We'll come back right around 12:45. So, we want to be fresh, and the mayor's told us she still has a lot on her plate to go over with us. So, we'll see you back, we'll be in recess, to 12:45.
All right, Madam Clerk, just tell us when you're ready.
Madam Vice Mayor, we are... All right, Madam Vice Mayor, if you're ready to call the meeting back to order, we're all set to go.
All right, staff, I know we're having a good time, which is awesome, but we're going to get back to business. And I don't know, Madam Clerk, if Madam Mayor is with us.
Madam Mayor is not on at the moment.
Okay.
But I will let you know as soon as that changes. So we're reconvening at 12:49 at this time. Councilmember Breckus is absent and Mayor Sheevy is absent. And we'll move back into questions.
Good. So where we ended was that Mayor Sheevy opined, and then we had some public comment. And we're opening another round. I know Mayor Sheevy said she had at least five more things to ask about. And I'm going to skip my turn for now. There, I think there are a few more things I've got on my list. Let me just get my notes together. One sec. Here it is. Well, I think I'll go ahead and ask this question, actually. One of the things that I'm very excited about is that we are going to be opening the pool. And there's a good, a pretty decent budget in there for pool operations. And would you mind pulling up that slide? However, there's a however. There's two things I'm a little bit worried about, and I'm just going to voice them. And I know this is just a swag or a best guess on what we'll need for staffing. But I'm just concerned making sure we have enough people to do all the things. And what I'm worried about is that I wanted to know what the proposed pool hours are so that the staffing, we understand what we're buying. And what I know is that in any complement of staffing, people go on vacation, people get sick. There's always about a 20% vacancy, even with a full complement of staff. And what I don't want to see is the pool hours impacted. I already hear a lot of comments from the other pools. Well, the pool closes at 5:00 or after the certain swim lap, then they're closed for the afternoon. And I'm just hoping in this case that, you know, we've got a brand-new facility that we're not going to be shutting at, let's say, at 4:00, when it could stay open until 7:00 or even 10:00. So if you could just address that, Nathan.
Turn us over to Nathan.
Thank you for the question. Nathan Oli, Parks and Recreation Director, for the record. So what's not shown explicitly, or I guess is clearly in the slides, is that there's a significant amount of temporary staff budgeting to ensure that we can operate for those times and cover vacations, things like that. So we are ecstatic with the positions that were approved and that we were able to already start to make some offers or to be ready for the summer. The proposed hours of operation, as they are currently, is 5:30 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. Saturday, 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Now, portions of the pool can be shut off while the facility remains open. So during the school year, it's probably not prudent to have, you know, the slide open while the kids are in school, but we'd have it open in the afternoon. So just try to make good business decisions. But any time in those hours of operation, fitness would be available, lapsman would be available, and things like that.
Okay. So let me ask you a question. On the weekend, you said closing at 7:00 p.m. Is it possible, and maybe you've already thought all this through, I'm sure you really have, but is it possible to have it open for rental for pool parties or something?
Absolutely. And that is what happens in the summer in most of our pools, is that the weekend late evenings are pool rental times.
Oh, already?
Absolutely, yes.
So it's actually, we'll be open past 7:00, but for a dedicated purpose?
Correct.
So you might just use the mid- So you might just use the mid-size pool where people recreate, not the Olympic-sized pool for, and they could reserve that with a rental system and pay?
Yes.
Okay. That's very cool. I didn't understand that when I saw 10 to 7:00 when you said that, so.
Absolutely.
Makes sense. Well, and then let me ask this. We're doing the fee study, and I know you've done a detailed assessment of, what is it, like write-offs or discounts for different levels of people's earning income? What is the lowest in the heist?
So if we can get the overhead up, I can share this graphic that people much better than me put together. Let's zoom out a little bit. So the, the standard rate for an individual adult with, with no consideration of, of income challenges would be $60, and it drops down from there. So the lowest, a child could get in for $3 a month. An additional, so and then the initial adult for $12 a month, and then the additional adult. So like, let's say, as an example, a household size of three with two adults and a child could get in for as low as $22 a month.
And as high as 90?
As high as, as high as...
Hundred and five?
Yeah, that's correct.
Hundred and five?
Yeah, hundred and five.
Okay. And then you've set, set out a schedule?
I'm sorry?
Set out a schedule. Your next slide down.
Sure. And these are just some example packages of, of at income and discount rates.
Okay. All right. Well, it's something I want to keep an eye on. I've expressed a desire to, at least the first year or two, be a little bit under what would be Marketplace, gym, pool, there's lots of them around. You can join them. Everything in the north to St. Mary's or to the south to, what is it called? It used to be called Double Diamond or Diamond Country, but now it's another name, that pool. So I just want to make sure that we're making it accessible. I know, I, I'm a little worried. It's a little overcomplicated, and I wonder who's going to be calculating this? The front desk person?
Sure. Our front desk staff and our, and the quote-unquote "sales" staff up there will be well-versed in this. And then also, just to, as a part of that initial phase, we're going to have founders' memberships where if you do sign up, it'll be a significant discount off of the rate, and then we'll maintain that rate even through price increases.
So the only thing I'd ask, since we have a pilot year, is that we do analyze it?
Absolutely.
And make sure the rates aren't discouraging people?
Absolutely.
And then come back to us next year with a, you know, potentially revised schedule, either up or down, whatever you think?
Will do.
All right. I'm going to turn my time over. Do you have more comments, questions? Councilmember Reese?
And Madam Vice Mayor, just for the record, Mayor Sheevy is with us, and she's been on since 12:54.
Okay. And let me actually go, I mean, Ms. Ebert, you have not been in this rotation this morning. We've all had two turns. I just had a third.
Yeah, I have a question for Director Uliat. Hi. So do you anticipate that the, the, the funds that you'll receive from pool memberships will pay for the salaries, or do you think that, I know you mentioned that we'll have funding, but do you think that that will cover the, the salaries?
I, I think, I think there's an opportunity to, to get very close. And I think that's part of operating a good business model where if there isn't heavy usage, reducing the, the, the amount of staff in a space and just, just being smart. So the flexible numbers of the temp salaries is the part that the business will kind of help dictate the spending, and we'll make adjustments based on usage. The full-time salaries that we're adding, we do believe our revenue will more than cover that.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? No, not right now. Ms. Councilmember Reese?
Thank you, Mr. Uliat. I just wanted to sort of, because we have you here about the Moana Springs Aquatics Center. Have we spoken with our, you know, our swimming teams and master swimmers about the hours? Meaning, are we talking to them about what their needs are? I sometimes hear people who want to go and swim at like 4:00 a.m. I don't know that people are crazy, but what, what are your thoughts there?
So our, our aquatics team that we have on staff right now, Danny, Lauren, and Noah, have been working with the, the current teams that we have, the current groups, to talk about lane allocations and, and times and things like that. And that is the beauty of this facility is that we can have this massive 50-meter pool serving a ton of our competitive swimming and our recreation swim programs, and then still have the other pool open for our community members who just want to come in and swim and play and, and do some resistance training on the, in the lazy river thing. So, yes, we have been heavily involved with SNICA and with our user groups.
Well, I take it that as this pool opens, it will relieve pressure on our other pool facilities, which means everybody gets greater access to the pool resources that we have.
Absolutely.
Yeah, it's great.
Great. All right. Councilmember Taylor, anything?
I don't have any questions for Director Uliat, but I do have a budget question if that's okay.
Sure, of course.
This, this is sort of, I guess, for our manager. And my question is, when we had our first workshop back in March, I was interested in learning what we need to do as a council looking five, 10 years in the future for finding financial sustainability? And are there big things that we need to start thinking about? This is perfect. I mean, this is such a great effort for right now. But I'm wondering, as the city grows, as we look at our infrastructure, as we look at our resources, what are things we need to do as, with our tax base and our, our income?
I actually think that, that, that this is a pretty natural segue after hearing Mr. Uliat talk about the business model that will sustain the maintenance side of the new facility. I think really understanding the challenges that the city and the community face in infrastructure, whether that's our facilities or our parks or our streets, and, and matching, whether it's a fee schedule or budgeted decisions to the life and maintenance obligations that come along with some of these new spends. I think really understanding how revenue is created and then how that revenue, whether it's property tax or C-Tax, is then distributed to the various agencies around our community is important because I don't believe that, particularly in the C-Tax space, that the revenue generation necessarily then funds the services that are required to keep that revenue generation moving in a positive direction. I think measuring results or setting expectations for investments that you make will be important, right? So when you, when you look at your choices in, in any given budget cycle and say, "We're going to do, we're going to spend $1 million on police officers," for example, a million and a half dollars on police officers, asking the questions of, "So what do we anticipate that we'll be able to achieve that we couldn't previously achieve? What does this mean for our community?" And you could do that for any of our departments, right? I mean, I think everybody here punches above their weight class, but they're, they're all understaffed. They're all underfunded. And that's not, you know, that's not, I think, a, a knock on this council. I think you do the very best you can with the, with the resources you provide, you're, you're given through the various funding models. But again, I think that's, that goes back to understanding how revenue is created in the first instance, and then how it is distributed back to the government agencies through the statutory formulas. And then I think finally, you, you need to be patient and really targeted in your approach to redevelopment. So I think adopting strategies and then sticking to those strategies that require private-side investment in advance of public-side investment, that's how you're going to get the most bang for your buck out of, out of that increment that gets, that gets generated in those spaces.
Did that get you answered?
It did. I think at some point I might want to learn more about the steps that we need to do, that we need to take to get us to some of those places. Maybe the C-Tax discussion or redevelopment discussion. I don't think this is the time, but it gives me an overview of, of some things that we need to be talking about and thinking about for the future.
All right, good. All right, moving on to Councilmember Martinez.
Thanks so much, Vice Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Taylor, for that global question. I think it's going to provide us with some good context moving forward. I did just have one quick question about the fee ranges for reservations on our recreation facilities. I know that you're asking for us to approve a range, but I'm just wondering if those are set? Or is there like leeway for staff to kind of say, "Hey, we're going to charge this for this event and this for this event," or is it based on the actual facility?
So there are, sorry, Nathan Oliat, Parks and Recreation Director, for the record. So there currently are fees set for each one of the, you know, particular rooms, whether it's a room at Evelyn Mount or at Neal Road. So what we're doing is trying to fit everything on the scale to try to reduce the, the amount of lines in the fee schedule, but that we would not increase by more than a percentage point that makes sense for each room in an, in an annual year. So there's, other than California Building, which we've improved significantly in, in the ability with HVAC and operation that the facilities team and Public Works team have done a great job to improve, there's not a significant increase on any of our room spaces in this fee schedule. It's just trying to consolidate, you know, instead of having seven different rooms named that are about the same size, we just say medium-sized room, meeting room, or something like that. So does that explain that, or?
Yeah, it does. I guess I'm just trying to pinpoint whether, like, let's say, one of the rooms in Evelyn Mount, regardless of who reserves that room, it's going to be the same cost for that room. We just not are putting that or identifying that in the fee schedule now.
Yeah, at this, at this, at this time, yes, that would be the case. If we talked about a pricing policy where there would be some ability to fluctuate based on high, high-use periods, you know, the prime time hours in the evening versus the, you know, if you can do a meeting at lunchtime in the middle of the week, things like that. So, but at this time, it is that single rate for, for the particular room.
Okay. Yeah, and I appreciate the sensitivity to the upgrades at the California Building because I know that along with the outdoor space that it provides, it's going to be a great facility for our community.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, is that what you had? Yeah, I'm interested to, I mean, I want to prepare us for getting questions that should a private business pay something different than, let's say, a nonprofit or another governmental agency? Are we charging other governmental agencies? Many groups come and use, for example, the room in McKinley for either the boardroom or the auditorium.
Sure. Nathan Oliat, Parks and Recreation Director. One of our goals for and objectives for this year is to put a pricing policy in place to help define that, what, what levels of service and price incurs for the actual user group versus is a burden on the tax base. So that is something that will be coming forward.
Okay, next year.
Hopefully very, well, hopefully the first quarter.
Okay. And then I'm going to turn to Madam Mayor, who's, who started queuing us up with a number of questions.
All right, thank you so much. I think I want to kind of, I think Councilwoman Taylor talked a little bit about like sort of longevity of sustainability, and then our city manager weighed in. And I am actually really proud of how far we've come because it was really challenging for many, many, many years. It's still challenging, don't get me wrong, but I do think it's opportunities to look at things a little bit differently. And what I mean by that, like just one example, you know, everyone sort of talked about these district polls, these light polls. And part of my thought was, you know, I would think too, something like that could fall under a room tax because those are obviously great placemakers and also very, I, I think tourism-centric when it comes to placemaking. And so why couldn't we use room tax for some of those placemaking initiatives? And then, you know, also looking at other, you know, other fees in the fee schedule, and one is to align with other jurisdictions on some of our fees because some of them are completely out of range, out of whack. And I think we kind of need to look at all of that so it balances out, like, on, you know, some of our appeal fees, because I understand that, you know, Sparks and County have a different appeal costs. And so I think we're kind of out of those balances. And I wonder if it's not an opportunity to really, you know, look at some of those things? Because I think, especially in the appeals fee, there seems to be, you know, this big, I think, divide of what others in the region are charging. So I just kind of think, you know, thinking a little bit different because we've never looked at the room tax for maybe some of this placemaking. And then, again, looking at some of our fee schedules on what makes sense, what doesn't make sense. There was even, you know, some talk about warehouse fees, those kinds of things. So I just want to make sure, because sometimes I know some of it's very political and, and, but I do think it should be region-specific, so we're staying in line so that the sustainability of the long-term budget does sort of stay on track. Does that make sense, Vicki?
Yes, I understand what you're saying. We did provide a memo that outlined where we had every department back at the March meeting. You did request that we look at some of those comparisons across the jurisdiction. So we did ask the departments to do that, and we provided a memo back to council that included that. That is a much broader topic, I think, than we're going to be able to address at this juncture, but we could certainly address it going into next year now that we have that baseline. Look at all of the fees across the study. One of the things that we do every five years is we do a fee study every five years just to make sure that we are in alignment with what it actually costs us to produce, whatever that service is. So we do adjust that every five years, but I think we, you are on to something that we should be looking across jurisdictions as well, and that, that's the second piece of that.
Yeah, because it brings to mind, Vicki, I'm just curious, because it brings to mind like staff time on appeals, right? And what's the associated cost with that? And, you know, again, aligning with, you know, Sparks and the county, because isn't it quite a bit, big difference?
There is a big difference, yes.
So, I mean, that's something I would support in this budget. That's just me, but I do think, again, looking at everything that should be aligned, and I know you look at it every five years, but I think, you know, to Councilmember Taylor's point, the longevity of sustainable budgets and sort of, if, you know, we're kind of out of whack, then it's harder to get back in line, so. And then I'll just wheel back to you, Madam Vice Mayor.
Okay.
I have more, just don't want to take up everyone's time.
Well, we want to hear what you have to say, and you can continue on, and we have Mr. Pingree here. I just wanted to, before he speaks, just say, last time, last budget, we had a fairly in-depth conversation about appeal fees, and we decided at that time, I think, to go with $100. And the reason was, just to recap, that we wanted to continue to provide access to government. In other words, this is a, a redress kind of situation. And whether it's offense that we heard the other day or something else, you know, a different kind of thing. But that was a decision a year ago. It's always up for discussion.
Can we have Mr. Pingree?
We do. He's right here.
Good afternoon.
Oh, good.
Chris Pingree, for the record. Yes, we did address this during last year's budget hearings, meetings, and we did end up increasing that rate from $55 to $100. But regionally across the board, and, you know, we did a, we did a study last year at this time just across the state to kind of see where we are in those appeals. As we all know, we still want to provide that access to, you know, to applicants who, who do feel that they need their voices heard on, you know, land entitlement cases, building permits. So we do have, we do have that process, but our fees are substantially lower than. We do, we charge $68 for an administrative appeal, which is building permits, signed permits, code enforcement. And then we charge $100 apiece for the land entitlement-related appeals, which, you know, going across the board, City of Sparks does something completely different. They charge a not-to-exceed number, and that staff time is billed to the applicant if it does end up going to appeal. And Washoe County has a, a different model where theirs is about $1,200 is what their, their appeal cost is, depending on, they've got it broke down to, you know, a different nature of anywhere from $1,000 to $1,400 for, for those individual appeals for different land entitlements. So we're kind of across the board, but throughout the state, the average is about $750 each for each appeal. And we are still, you know, much, much lower than that with the staff time that goes into it.
Okay. I, I guess that's my, my, more of my concern. Of course, so tell me, would their access be different? I would assume not. They would get the same level of service. However, it does take a lot of staff time to produce. And have you done sort of studies on how much staff time you spend on these? I'm, I'm just curious. And it wouldn't impede the level of access to government, would it?
To answer that question, no, it wouldn't. I mean, each appeal is, is unique in its each, in its own nature to where it takes a significant of staff time for the larger, more heavily contested appeals with public comment and, and the prep time that goes into each appeal, where an administrative appeal is probably not going to take as much time or, or, or cost staff time the same significance of a, you know, a contested land use entitlement.
I, this isn't really about like what the item is. It's more about the fees, the fee schedule where we look at it as a regional. There's a reason why that those fees look the way that they do on everything, not just this one, but all of them. But I, I worried a little bit more about this because I do know that staff time can be insurmountable in time and, you know, just, and why, why that is. And I get it because you can obviously make some other arguments where... And I get it because you can obviously make some other arguments where, and it's not popular politically, I'm sure, but I also worry about the staff time and when we talk about sustainable budgets, long-term, this is just one tiny, tiny example of where I think Reno has really sort of stood down whenever it comes to looking at our fee schedule. And, you know, they can be warranted. I'm not saying, you know, everything. I'm just saying, I just want to make sure that we look at it and you, you know, five years is actually a long time. I think it should be probably every, you know, two and a half, three years to look at fee schedules because they change so dramatically. So, and even still, like, we've had this conversation with our seniors and the amount they pay, we didn't feel that that was warranted. So, I understand. I just wanted to see because it looks so dramatic in price and why that is, but obviously other things take more staff time and, and the outcomes. So, that's what I wanted to know. And then I'm going to send it back to you, Vice Mayor, and then I'll get on to the topic.
Yep, I'll go on now. Usually I would go next, but I'm going to go to Councilmember Ebert.
I just wanted to talk about the fees. I wanted to share that I've had constituents reach out to me and express that they've wanted to file an appeal and they're not able to afford it with the, the fees that they are currently. I know that we're lower, but I, I know from experience that, that people won't be able to afford these appeals and I don't think it's fair for people to not be able to, to do these things because they can't afford it. I just think it's really, we need to be really careful here about what kind of service we provide as a city and making it, you know, a service that's only provided for people that can afford it, you know, and just, I have a really hard time with that. And maybe if, if we have a policy where we can waive fees for people if they're, meet a certain income level, I could support it. But I really, I mean, I had a woman call me who really desperately wanted to file an appeal about something that was happening directly behind her home and she could not afford sixty-eight dollars. So, it's just something that really would be very upsetting to raise those fees. I know people just would not be able to afford it.
So, I'll, I'll just opine on this too. And I, I was very active in this conversation last time. My concern was when residents are filing an appeal about something that a developer wanted to do, they're, they're just sitting there minding their own business when suddenly, let's say, a development is going in down the street or something's happening that will affect their property. And so, to have to pay, let's say, seven hundred and fifty dollars or twelve hundred dollars to protect their property seemed very onerous. And that's why we, we sought a middle ground, doubling it from fifty-five to a hundred, but not quadrupling it to whatever the proposal was last time. So, I just think, you know, let's just continue to evaluate it and, but that's my challenge is that there's also the case where a developer is very challenged by a planning commission decision and they aren't happy with it. And then to have to fi, pay twelve hundred dollars just to have a, let's say, reconsideration over a condition, it doesn't seem fair that way either to me. So, that was just where I was, Madam Mayor, and apparently where Councilmember Ebert is, but always good to have the conversation.
No, again, it, you've got to be careful about getting hung up on the specific issue. My point is, is that those fees should always be looked at. We've looked, we've seen where the seniors also have been impacted by raising fees and things like that, right? So, I worry that five years is, is too long. But also, if you're looking at sustainability, what does that look all across the region, right? Those kinds of things.
And, and I'm sorry.
And we're both.
Yeah, go ahead. I, I think you did ask, but how many appeals do we get, you know, on average a year, would you say?
This is Chris Pingree again, for the record. We average obviously much higher than our neighboring jurisdictions just due to the fact of our lower fee, but we did approximately thirty, around thirty over the last three year period. We have seen an uptick in that over the last year and a half of, I think we've done twelve of, in some ways, whether that's land use or an administrative appeal. But we're doing about thirty in a three-year period.
Is there, in three years?
Mm-hmm.
So, that's ten a year?
Mm-hmm.
And is that, what about the administrative ones that you spoke of?
That was including, we, we did a total of.
Even those?
From the data that we put together for last year's budget, we had thirty-one appeals in that three-year period.
In three years?
And that was a combination of both land use and.
So, it's ten a year?
It's not, it's not an extreme amount. And we have a lot of development happening. I mean, it's not like we're getting one per, per thing that's coming through here.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
Good. Let me, I'm going to, again, skip my turn and go to, do you want to speak, Councilmember?
Sure, thank you.
Reese?
Madam Vice Mayor. I wanted to continue having a conversation about some of the areas where I think there are opportunities for one-time funding and perhaps, Mr. Uliott, I would direct this comment to you. I have spent some time more lately than I have in the past at our greenhouse and with our horticulturist and arborist and it sort of dovetails with Councilmember Vice Mayor Dewar's comments about trees and different kinds of things in that regard. But I, I think our greenhouse is a really undervalued asset and I, I know it probably can use some, maybe we'll call it modernizing, updating, sprucing up. I, I cannot believe what they do there with so very little and the volunteers that are there just are an awesome group of mostly, we'll say, older local community members, but they get in there and they are growing stuff and they're working the earth and soil and they're making our community much immeasurably more beautiful through their actions. And so, I think for me, and it doesn't mean it's this year that I'm saying we have to get some allocation or line item in there for it, but I'm saying long-term, perhaps what I would look to you for is some advice and direction on how to really honor that element of our city, which is again, fairly, I think, small, but packs above its weight. So, maybe you want to speak to that.
Thank you, thank you for the, the comment and thanks for noticing the talents of that team. You're far more lucky to have them than you are to have me because they are just amazing. Matt Basil, Ryan Share and their volunteers and staff are just incredible. So, one thing to note, because I think the timing would be important because we do have a significant amount of money coming from a grant for, that was for the airway project. So, we'll be able to make some improvements. So, probably this time next year, we'll have a good idea of, hey, what else? So, number one, we need to secure the property so that we don't do a lot of work and it gets vandalized, damaged, ripped out. So, but thank you for, for acknowledging that and that would be, it would be a good investment and there could be an opportunity for potentially tree farms in other areas of Reno that could, could be even more supportive to increasing canopy coverage.
And let me ask this question. When you, as a department director level person, are looking at your CIP needs, have you placed the greenhouse and the needs there into the CIP or has it not yet made it there?
It, it is in the, the monster list of deferred maintenance, for sure. The improvements are there and, and so it's great to see that the grant's going to help there. So, it is, there is improvements there for irrigation and then also structure repairs, things like that. And number one, again, securing the space where it's not accessible by just walking around.
Well, it's one of those things where I think if we will show it some love, some of the other things that Councilmember Vice Mayor Dewar has spoken about kind of naturally flow from it and, and, you know, getting more trees into the North Valleys as you all were doing on Arbor Day last.
Yeah, we planted forty-one on Saturday in, in, in Panzer Valley Park.
Yeah.
And then we had the Arbor Day, we planted eight in.
Macalhoun.
Yes, Dorothy, Macalhoun. So, that was amazing, those experiences.
And, and ultimately, my point being is that just perhaps elevating it into the priority sphere because it's not, I mean, we don't all have to have the same priorities. I'm just suggesting that one of mine would be that facility and I think it deserves all the credit it's getting for beautification efforts, the work that's being done there. And again, small staff of, of two basically, right? But huge impact to our region.
And citywide impact, right.
Yeah, it's just incredible. And so, hopefully we'll just find ways to continue to grow that space.
Yeah. Let me move on to Councilmember Taylor. Okay, Councilmember Martinez?
I'm good as well, thank you.
Okay, since we're coming to some closure, how about you, Madam Mayor?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
Let's go, someone brought up, I believe Reno Works.
Yeah, I did.
Oh, okay. Let's go back to that and then obviously there's a set aside for fifty thousand dollars. I'm curious what exactly that goes to and maybe, I think there was an ask to, right, raise that to a hundred. And I'm curious if any of that can be tied to, because we used to, and I don't know what it looks like now, but after they would complete the program, they would have access, they would have a job and they would have housing. And tying some of this money to like rental or deposit assistance. So, what does that look like?
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you for the question. For the record, Elaine Wiseman, Housing Manager. So, currently, the yearly amount that the council approves is fifty thousand dollars. That goes toward, it can pay for about one of the, what we call the classes each year. So, that covers the salaries of the VOA personnel who supervise the class as well as the participants, stipends or their salaries for working alongside with our Parks and Recs and Public Works Departments. And it also includes some training and other materials. So, historically, Volunteers of America has also done fundraising and so it's been a collaborative effort where they fundraise and then we put in our dollars and it makes it a public, public-private partnership where their fundraising dollars have essentially dwindled down. And so, while they're not saying that they are not going to contribute any of the funds, they've just reduced the amount that they're able to contribute moving forward. So, that's where the hundred thousand dollar ask comes in, is that so we can still, the hundred thousand plus the fifty thousand that is already approved, so that we continue to get at least two classes per year. And that's with VOA committing, I forget, just a smaller amount, I think about twenty-five thousand dollars per year. As far as the housing piece goes, we currently have other funding that we still do pay for their housing rent assistance for three months, deposit assistance and utility, rent utility, rental deposit for rents and utilities, excuse me, and then three months of rental assistance upon graduation. So, that, that's currently what we have in place and that's completely different grant funding that we receive.
All right, and, okay, I'm trying to figure out, is that grant funding consistent?
Actually, this, how we're paying it for this most recent class is a newer grant that we received from part of our home art funding that the Washoe County Home Consortium received and we applied through the consortium and received a grant for about two hundred thousand dollars to pay for the next couple of classes for that rental assistance. So, that is new.
And what, Elaine, I'm curious, what's the percentage of people that go through the program that can sustain housing after three months?
You know, I don't have the percentage right off the top of my head, but I, I think we're somewhere in like the eighty percent range, somewhere in the eighties of success, meaning people have not returned to homelessness. So, that's how we view success, whether or not they're in the same unit or another unit, they haven't returned to homelessness.
Yeah, and can, do you have a cap on how many people can go through the program?
So, we can do twelve per class and that's, the only reason that we cap it at that is because that's the size of the van that VOA has that, that drives people around. So, we start with twelve and then, you know, unfortunately, we, we usually lose a couple during the class. Yesterday, or Monday, actually, we graduated seven out of twelve.
Yeah, I would like to see something like this. We really need to think about expanding it and the long-term success of housing and the workforce program. I don't think we focus enough on that. I think you guys do, I don't think the council does. I also would say, you know, VOA is a good partner in some ways and I'm not so sure in others. So, if their partnership is, is dwindling down, I think the city has been good to them. You know, with our side of funding, whether it's buildings or maintenance that they truly should have been responsible for, you know, I think there's other ways that they can step up. I'm all about, you know, funding more for this program, but I also want us to see, I would like to see the council become a little bit more engaged on the outcomes of what's working, what isn't working when it comes to our homeless populations. Because I think these are worthwhile programs and thanks to Councilwoman Jordan when she was there, this was her baby, she started it, but this gives people purpose. And I think we need to continue to focus on what is that purpose? What are the continual goals and outcomes when we provide them? Like the rental assistance, is three months long enough? It might need to be six months. And then I also know that we've helped people with lots of deposit assistance in the tune over the last few years of seven million dollars, right? So, I'd love to see, make sure that it also is targeted to workforce-specific because those are people that are literally working, getting back on their feet. They need the assistance, we know that. And there are some that just continue to keep coming back and back and back and we have funded that and that should not, you know, that shouldn't be a thing. We should be following the progress when it comes to workforce or being able to sustain housing because some people need wraparound services. I think this program is, is wonderful and something that we really should be expanding on because I think it has so much potential. I don't think we have hit its potential, but I think you guys have done a phenomenal job and I just think that the council, this could be a really great way to see some significant outcomes and, and tie it to, you know, ROIs. So, anyway, thank you so much. I don't know if the council feels the same way, but I, I think it's impressive and we haven't really expanded on it. So, I, I think a hundred thousand dollars is kind of a drop in the bucket, but I think we should look at what does long-term look like and maybe it's the new Sage trailers that we have coming in that we identify them for people that literally are going back to work. I mean, these are very dedicated people. It's tough, tough to get back on your feet after being homeless.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I'll add that I think you're, you're very right on what you're saying and what I'd like to see, I was going to, when it came to my turn, which I guess we're back at, I was going to recommend that we sort of do a last round here and kind of put any closing thoughts on the budget so we can kind of wrap up this meeting. But in terms of what you just said, I would like to recommend that the staff look at the contingency on a few projects. One would be, we mentioned earlier, the cold case for a hundred grand. I'd like to recommend Reno Works to get started, a hundred grand. The e-waste, I had heard different numbers, I had heard seventy-five thousand, I heard a hundred fifty, but assuming for whatever reason, it's a hundred fifty, that. And then to wrap up this horse fencing and that would use just under a million dollars that you say we have, be about nine fifty. I'd love to see you guys look at that and bring it back to us in your fourth quarter. And then on the other things that are on this one-time funding, you need to do work. Reno Arch, OPEB. Well, OPEB and Fire Station are going to be an allocation based on what we haven't allocated to the other projects, but Rise and Karma Box, which I understand doesn't have an instant need right now, but it looks like it's October. So, it would fit very well in the summary of the one-time funding. The code enforcement trailer, the Evelyn Mount exercise room, what does the Riverwalk improvements, what are we talking about there? The park district assessment, we haven't heard much about that, but it'd be good to, before we fund it, to understand what it is. And the human resources information system, my understanding is this is a very costly item, over ten million dollars. And so, I think the staff wanted to get started with an assessment, maybe it's an evaluation of different programs or what we actually need, do an assessment. So, those are, and then Virginia Street placemaking, not really sure what you're asking for there. So, for me, I would love to kind of move some of these more emergent things that need money right now, use the contingency. And then the others, let's do the cost estimates and bring it back when you're closing out your budget. Thank you so much for what you've done today. I, I'm going to put in a final pitch too on my sustainability initiatives and that's, I wanted to be clear, I was recommending bringing back a person that we lost almost twenty years ago now, which is a tree inspector. They would do a lot of code compliance, they would go work with our residents. We get a lot of requests from residents to trim trees on the parkway in front of their homes. And there's a, a lot of things that that person used to do, working with contractors, on street rehab jobs and I understand maybe an updated name might be good, but I'd rather not wait. I mean, the, the book of business needs. I mean, the book of business needs to be done by somebody. It's not getting done today. I get so many complaints. So that's one thing, would be a position, you mentioned 31 positions, this would be a 32nd. And then on the one shots, if it's one shot, or if you can fit it in the budget, I had recommended the $100,000 for tree maintenance. And if you need to trim that down to fit a number, that's fine, but as long as we get started. But again, I get a lot of complaints, you know? Well, that kind of wraps up my part. And let me ask any final comments from my colleagues? Councilmember Reese? Councilmember Taylor?
Yeah, thank you. And I'll just go to the one-time funding slide, just because I thought we were looking at this, we weren't giving direction on where...
We are. I was just suggesting on the contingency part.
Okay, so I guess I'm not ready to make any recommendations.
No motions, no motions.
Do you mind if I finish? Is that okay?
That's fine. Sorry, just clarifying, I wasn't asking for any motion.
Okay, great, thank you.
Or direction.
So on the one-time funding things, I think these are all good. I'll need more information on them. I think all the programs are fantastic. With new positions, I thought that we were within that 31 people. I don't know if there's any room for 32 people.
There's not, there's not room for any extra in this budget as it's currently presented. So we would have to figure out a way to cut something in order to put something else in.
Okay.
Or we would have to use contingency or something else, yes. But that's something that if you gave direction that you wanted to look at some things, we could certainly work with the City Manager's Office and see if there's an opportunity there. But the way it currently exists, we would have to cut something to add something.
Sounds good. And I'm just, I'm really thankful for all the work. I think my priorities from the March 18th workshop were heard and listened to, and I'm very impressed. Thank you, everyone. I know this is a lot of work. Thank you, Matt.
Yeah. Councilmember Martinez.
Thanks so much, Madam Vice Mayor. I'll also take the time to thank staff, you know, for putting in the time to get the projects together and listen to our concerns, I think, especially for the, as we start looking at more infill development and making sure that our current residents have parking, I really appreciate you listening to those concerns. I did have a quick question about the Code Enforcement Trailer. What is that? And I guess I'm in a position to not be fully educated enough to make decisions about these one-time opportunities and funding sources, but I just wanted to learn more about that.
It's about space. They're running out of space out at the corp yard, so it would create an additional space for them to have a workspace to operate out of. And Alex could speak to this more, where are you?
I just hadn't heard about it. I just wanted to know more, that's it.
Well, just to give you an idea, Alex Willey, for the record, my office used to be a closet. So that can give you an idea.
Perfect. So you're looking for more workspace for our employees?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just wanted to put that out there. Thank you so much, I appreciate it. Thanks, Madam Vice Mayor.
And then I'm gonna go to Councilmember Ebert, and then back to the mayor.
No more questions, thank you.
No more? And then what about you, Madam Mayor?
Yeah, and I said this last time too, let's see, with the dedicated walking team downtown, I want to make sure that that team is in place and that it's not a rotated team, because I think that's part of, you know, there's always sort of this frustration. And it should be really a truly a community policing model, where you literally know each officer's name, every business down there knows its name, all those things. There should be a broad conversation too about possibly a bid in the Midtown District. And listen, obviously, I own a business in Midtown, full disclosure, so, and that was on the record when we started too. So I just, you know, I just know how hard it is for some of these small businesses. They can really, really struggle. And especially if we really want to have placemaking, and I think this council supports it, and events and things like that, that truly revitalize spaces. Midtown is revitalized, it's a revitalized part of the city because the businesses put their sweat equity in, not the city. I was there, it's actually one of the reasons I ended up running for City Council, because I, we didn't feel like the City Council heard us at the time. And several of us businesses started the Midtown District. And they, they said, hey, we want you to go to a council meeting and talk about sidewalks and lighting and things of that nature. And really, Midtown is today, not because of what the city has done, yes, you know, the RTC improvements, but that took, you know, 14 years in the making. It's really been the sweat equity of all those small businesses making it happen. And so I think we have to be very careful about slapping those small businesses in the face, when actually they were the ones that revitalized a part of the city when the city wanted nothing to do with them. And quite honestly, there was, there was no support from maybe one or two council members, to be honest with you. But there really wasn't. And it's been by the force of nature that Midtown is successful today because of those businesses, not because of the city of Reno. Which none of you were there at the time, so be grateful for that, because I think we've changed and embraced a much different culture today. But thanks, you know, so much for understanding and being very aware of how hard it is to make a business run and be successful.
All right, was that it, Madam Mayor?
That's it. I just want to be clear that those walking teams, because we're fighting for, you know, downtown, we've been talking about a downtown walking team for a long time, it has not been successful. So I want to make sure it's dedicated, it's 24/7, and it does not rotate police officers. These are the same. And even if there's maybe some incentive that we have to say, hey, you know, this downtown walking team, you know, I don't, I don't know the politics and how it works within the department at all in any capacity, but is there some way that, you know, these officers, they, they communicate with businesses, they know people by names, they, they literally are ingrained in the community whenever they're in that district. And so I want them to be part of, you know, the fabric in every capacity. So I'm looking forward to it, and I want to thank Chief Nance for making this happen, because it's been sorely needed, and it's the first time that I think, that, I think that we're gonna see a difference. Because I think that, you know, there are challenges down there that we haven't seen before. And I will say, I was disappointed when some of the team was removed, and that was not under Chief Nance. So I appreciate her making this a priority, again, for downtown, a safe city is a prosperous city. And downtown is much more challenging, I want everyone to remember that, because of the tourism aspect, because of the density, the accessibility to services. So it's just, it's a city inside a city downtown. So I want to say thank you also to the council for supporting this.
All right. And just to close the loop on one other thing, we talked a lot about banners for the various areas, Midtown, Wells, and so on. And I think what I'm hearing, the sentiment on the council seemed to be, to be looking to fund that from either room tax or some other account, at least for the foreseeable future this year. And I want to check in though, that's what I was hearing people say, but is that, I see Mr. Martinez nodding?
Yes.
Okay. Anyone else have opinion on that? Okay. Well, anyway, that's what I was hearing people say. So when you come back with the budget, maybe look for a way to...
Look into that, yes.
Incorporate the banners, at least for now. And again, this may be something you phase in over time after we have conversation. I think we heard from the public speakers that they already think they are buying and maintaining the banners, and maybe discounting the effort to install or uninstall other banners, that kind of thing. So we all just need to have a better understanding of what we're talking about, I think.
Okay, absolutely.
Okay. Those are some wrap-up things I saw. Now, I want to remind everyone, we do have the RDA. And I don't know what all is involved there?
Not much, just good news.
Not much. Okay, so, so with that, I'm gonna close out this conversation, if I may. Last call, anyone? Okay, Madam Mayor? Any last thoughts? Okay.
No, I just want to say thank you, Vicki, and for Doug Thornley, you guys did a tremendous job. Each year, the budget gets better and better and better. I think, you know, it's really an art form. So just, I want to thank both of them so much, because I think they're also hearing council and seeing the concerns. And I know it's got to be really challenging, I don't think people realize that, because there's a lot of personalities on this council, and a lot of different asks and needs, and everything is worthy, everything. So it's got to be really challenging, Vicki, but you have just done an amazing job year after year, so thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I appreciate that.
Yeah, and kudos from me too. I mean, you made me being easy, and your team.
My team, yes.
Yes, you want to say their names?
Lindsay Hatfield, she's not in her squad, I don't know why. And Matt Taylor, our Assistant Finance Director. They are both amazing, and I have an amazing staff that works for me as well.
So that's good. That's really good. And this was a very seamless...
Team effort.
Yeah. Well, this for us today, council has been very good.
Good.
I mean, we've been able to speak our truths, talk about things we're worried about, it's really been a valuable exercise. I know here, just to wrap this out, we have nothing under the E ordinances or F ordinances adoption, or the city clerk. The last item on...
Mayor, or Vice Mayor, I'm prepared to move to direct staff to move forward with the development of the fiscal year 2024, 2025 budget and fee schedule based on the feedback from council.
Excellent. And a second, and a second from Mr. Martinez. Any comments on the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
All right, motion passes unanimously, we're on our way there. Excellent. We have item H, which is City Council Comments and Announcements. Does anyone have any today? Oh, yes, Councilmember Ebert?
I just want to let everybody know that it's, today's the first day of Older Americans Month. The kickoff was today at the Washoe County Senior Services Building. So just want to let everybody know, in case you want to go down, they have a lot of events going on this month too. So just want to let everyone know.
Very cool. Okay. Anyone else? No? Madam Mayor, anything under this item? Okay, not hearing anything, so we have no public hearings, or, let's see, we'll take a final public comment on this meeting.
Madam Vice Mayor, we have no public comment registered. If you're in Zoom and would like to make comment, please raise your hand at this time. We have no participants, we're closing out item J, looking for a motion to adjourn Reno City Council.
All right, we have a motion from Mr. Reese, a second from Mr. Martinez. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All right, this meeting is adjourned, and we're going to convene our Redevelopment Agency Board at, it looks like, 1:45. And would you like to take it away, Madam Clerk?
Give me just a second to get the meeting switched over.
Okay.
All right, Madam Vice Mayor, if you would like to call to order the Redevelopment Agency Board Special Meeting?
Yeah. I'm calling to order the Special Meeting of the Redevelopment Agency Board, Wednesday, May 1st, 2024. Again, I mentioned it was essentially 1:45 or 1:47. Back to you, Madam Clerk. We've already done the pledge.
I can call roll?
Would you please call roll?
Yes. Councilmember Breckus is absent at this time. Deor?
Here.
Martinez?
Here.
Ebert?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Reese?
Here.
Shivi?
Here.
Madam Vice Mayor, you do have a quorum of the Redevelopment Agency Board.
All right, any public comment to get us started?
We have no public comment registered. Additionally, we have not received any public correspondence.
Okay. Thank you.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Mr. Reese, second from Mr. Martinez to approve the agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? All right, motion carries unanimously, moving on to A5. We do have minutes, and these are from March 18th, 2024. I'm looking for a motion.
A second.
All right, we have a motion from Mr. Reese, second from Ms. Ebert. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We have no public hearings, and we'll turn our, on B, we'll turn our attention to item C1. Over to you.
Thank you.
Vicki Van Buren.
Vicki Van Buren, Director of Finance, for the record. We previously met on March 18th on this budget cycle, and so we talked about all the financials for RDA 1 and RDA 2 at that time, we did that deep dive. So I only have three slides for you today, and it's just an update of what changed from March 18th until now. So Redevelopment Agency 1, you remember this is that area that I showed you downtown, it's the downtown area that we have there. We have some bonds still outstanding in that area. The bond payments are shown on this slide with that yellow line, that shows where the bond payments are. Those bonds pay off in 2027. And this is where I was saying that the good news is coming in, because what we thought was we wouldn't be able to have any excess funds in here until after those bonds paid off. And once those bonds paid off, there's no other debt in here, and so it would go on, all the increment would be available. What this slide shows you is where we were in March is the blue line on each one, that's where we were projecting the revenue to be. On March 25th, we received the numbers, the actual numbers from taxation. And so you'll see on 2025 here, see that big gap between the blue and the green bar, the new projection? That amount above that debt service line, we're now seeing that, and we will see that for next year, next fiscal year 25. That amount, I believe, and I'm not proposing it with this budget, we'll watch it as the year goes along, but I believe by the end of next year, we will be able to pay back that loan to RDA 2, that $1.2 million. We pay that back next year, and in '26, as we move out, you'll have all of that green bar above that line, will be increment to be spent in downtown and going forward. So we are there a year earlier than what we thought we were going to be to actually have some real funds to start funding things downtown and funding things in the RDA. So really good news, good space. This is really hard to predict too, because as properties come online, we can kind of know how it's going to flow, but you never know how soon or, you know, exactly where it's going to hit in a year. So really good news. And I think this is really proof that revitalization of downtown is working, and the things that you as a board are doing are working. And it's in a positive direction, so.
Ms. Van Buren, could you just say a number? So it's, you said it's between the yellow line and the top of the green, or?
Yes.
Okay, so what is that?
It's, that in 2025, that's around $1 million. And so we need a million, we need $1.2 million in, to pay back that loan to RDA 2. And we do have a little bit of excess, I think, in there, in ending fund balance when we close out this year, just, I mean, a hair. And if we use that when we close out this current year, and this little bit, which isn't quite a million, because you see 3 million and 4 million over there on the side, it's not quite a million. If we use those two amounts together, I believe by the end of next year, we will be able to pay that off. So I will come back at some point during the year and say, hey, we verified, we have this money, and we can pay this back.
But, but I guess where I'm confused, is that the difference between the blue and the green, or is it the difference above the gold?
The difference above the gold is the excess that we would have.
Well, it looks like a lot more than a million. So that's, maybe I'm not...
In 2025, I'm just looking at 2025, next year, because we still have to pay back that loan first. Once we pay that back, and then going out in '26, the excess is still just that amount above that gold line, because the gold line is the debt service.
But it looks like it's like 6 million. That's where I'm confused. Is it the difference between the green and the blue, or is it above the gold?
So I'll take a try. So the difference, the difference between the green and the blue is, the blue is what Ms. Van Buren saw in the, showed you in March, right? And the green is what we're actually projecting and building this budget off of now.
Right.
Because the debt service exists in that space on the yellow line, and because we owe Redevelopment District 2...
The 1 million?
$1.2 million. There isn't really increment to do anything in agent, in District 1 until probably the end of next year. And so even though it shows that there's going to be money above and beyond the debt service, which is great news, right? It means we're in the black for the district for the year, that money needs to go into RDA 2 before we take any steps additional in District 1.
Okay.
And I guess for clarification, the line for the debt service, this is just the bonds, this does not include the 1.2 million. So this is just the bonds that we have outstanding, is shown on here. So that's why that little gap in '25, that could pay back RDA, and then going forward.
Yeah, got it. Okay, keep going.
Confusing, but it's still good news.
It's all good news, yeah. It's all good news. Yeah.
So, oh, there we go. RDA 2, same thing going on here. These estimates came in slightly higher than what we had originally. So again, the blue was what we came with in March, and the green are the new revised numbers. RDA 2 is very healthy, has a lot of tax increment in there. The only debt service in this one is the payment to the, the Nevada Land Group for the ballpark area. So, and that does continue until 2035. So there is a lot of capacity in here. This is just the tax increment shown each year, does not include the fund balance that we've accumulated over the last couple of years. So there's still significant portion of money there that's available. And we talked about that in the last meeting. The proposals for this, and this is the last slide that I have for you in here, the proposals are to add two positions in here. And again, this is in alignment with creating that team, and really creating that code enforcement piece, and enforcement around what council was looking for. And this would be just in the RDA 2 space. And if you'd like some more details on how this is going to work, because this is really building out the team that Lance and his team were looking at to do in this space. So that's what these two positions were. The two positions that you approved last year were a revenue and compliance officer and a property analyst. And the business license technician that is on here would really assist this revenue and compliance officer by doing a lot of the in-house work that they do. They come in from the field, do in-house work, and it would keep them being able to be out in the field and doing the things that they do, and having someone here in the office to do the office-type work. And then the next item on here is fire headquarters. And this is, we would like to use $10 million of currently existing funds. There's plenty available in RDA 2. There is a nexus for this to fund a portion of the headquarters out of here. Spoken to the city attorney's office, we've confirmed this. We would most likely have to come back to you and do a plan amendment, just to add this as a project within that plan area. But it does have a nexus. It's in the right location for it, and the funding is available. It would give us a very good head start. This is part of the phased plan that we have for financing this fire station. And what by doing this, it decreases the amount we have to bond in the future, and it keeps us on track with being ready to build once the plans are designed and everything. It speeds things up. So Ms. Kosky is here and can put her little slide up to, to show you that plan and the phasing of that, if you'd like to see that again. I think that's really important at this point to see how that's really going to
Okay.
help.
Go ahead and just get that on the slide. Okay. Carrie Kosky, Director of Public Works, for the, for the record. So, we've done a great job getting us to this point for the central station headquarters. And I, I believe you might recall seeing this from the last meeting that we had, when we awarded the core construction, the pre-construction services. Like Vicky was saying, with the phased work that we've been doing, we've been working very closely with finance, with the Chief Nance's group and Fire Chief to come up with this phased plan, so we can keep things just kind of moving along. When, when we first put together the, when we first assigned the $2 million, we originally put that towards the design, and we've used, for the most part, I think we've got about $500,000 left in that. We'll be using that for some tank removals and that sort of thing. But what, what we want to kind of point out here is the, the plan is, for the, for fiscal year '25, we've got to finish the design, and we've got to complete the hazardous materials survey. And that right now, I'm, I'm estimating to be around $4 million. That's why it's in ink, it's pen, it's not, it's not type written. Then the next thing that we want to do is the abatement and the demolition. And I'm thinking that that will happen after police has enough time to move out of the building, so that we're, we're planning for around April, May of next year. So that right now, I'm saying on the high end is probably going to be around $5 million. The great thing about having core construction, as the CIMAR, they put in our proposal that they would help us with the, the abatement, the demolition, kind of putting that project out. We're going to, we're going to hard bid that piece. So we're going to get competitive prices. And then I've got about $1 million in there for contingency. But what we're, we're looking at for '25 is, is that, that $10 million would be utilized for, for those items. Then as Vicky said, you know, we, we wouldn't plan to go to construction until 2027. So that gives us about a year to get our final costs, and figure out how much we want, we need to, to bond for. So I think this will set us up very nicely. So we won't have a site that we've got a building sitting there that's vacant for a, a long period of time. That's, that's, that's a concern that we all have. So I'm hoping that, that that's, that is, that's the, that's the plan moving forward.
All right. So in four years, a new station?
Yes.
Okay.
New stations.
Some rise.
And I can retire.
Okay, cool. All right. Back to you.
And just for clarity, this would be different than if you wanted to set aside money from the one-time funny, money we were talking about before. So if you wanted to set aside money for that, that would be more of a down payment so that we wouldn't have to bond as much. This also keeps us from having to bond as much, because they've already kind of anticipated how much a station would cost. Gets us closer to it. And the other great thing about this is we keep moving forward, and the site would be ready for construction at the point. Everything's ready. And you're not sitting on plans, and then a couple of years later, after you demolish and do other things, costs have gone up. It's going to keep us moving along and, and keep a really good pace for this project.
Cool.
So it's, it's really important. So that's the recommendations for this, and I'm looking for feedback on what you want to say for this.
Okay. Do you want to put up your other slide? Okay, let me open to council comments. Any feedback on what we've just heard? I'm going to give, from my perspective, a two thumbs up for putting this $10 million in, in for the fire headquarters to get to work. That'd be my preference. And I see you also have the two FTEs. I'm supportive of that as well. Anyone else? Yeah. Councilmember Taylor?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. I just want to understand, so if we, we're taking $10 million from RDA 2, it looks like, in what year is that? 24, 25?
Yes.
So do we have a little over 8 million in there in 2025?
Yes.
So
You would still have a lot of funding to do other projects and things that you would want to do coming forward. But that would be something that Brian and his team would probably come forward to later, because I don't really have any projects at this point. I think they're still working through what those would be, but you would still have funding for that as well.
Okay. And then, my other question, I guess, is for Brian, or when we sell properties, I think we've, we've sold a couple in the last year-ish, is that money going into these funds at all, or a separate economic development fund? Or I think I've asked this, and I'm not sure of the answer.
Yeah, Brian McCardle, Revitalization Manager. Those properties were quick claimed by the redevelopment agency to the city. And so the city actually sold those properties and received those funds. And those funds have gone towards economic development purposes.
Okay, thank you.
But not RDA projects.
Okay.
Clear?
Yeah. Thank you.
All right. Anyone up, Mr. Martinez?
Thanks so much, Madam Vice Mayor. I think I'm good. I just want to echo your support and appreciation for the staff and the work that went into this. So I like the direction that we're headed in. Thank you.
Okay. Madam Mayor, any comments?
Yeah, quickly. I'm, I'm curious, what about, because isn't the river part of RDA 2? Was there any thought about some allocation towards the river and revitalization projects with some of that funding?
Yep, Brian McCardle again. So we have not created a capital improvement plan for redevelopment projects, something we'd like to tackle next year. RDA 2 does consist of a portion just beyond the ballpark, all the way to 395 freeway. We don't have a capital improvement plan just yet for redevelopment funds.
Okay. I, yeah, I look forward to that. I just think we got to keep thinking of the river, downtown revitalization, safety. You know, we got to just keep staying focused on that, I think. And remember, public safety is a big part of that. I mean, our, our wet team is obviously on the river a lot, sometimes. And so, I mean, there's a huge safety component to all of that, right? A public safety component. And also a safety component, whenever it comes to people living along the river. It can be really dangerous. So that's, again, I just wanted to say, you know, what are we doing when we're looking at revitalization projects in RDA 2? And thank you for thinking of that. And I know that that's your space in Baileywick. So I look forward to seeing what your kind of vision is and what you want to do in the future.
Yeah. Quick correction is that we will have with that River Master Plan, we will have budgets and projects. It'll just have to be decided on how those are paid for through RDA or other funds. But we will have a plan in the short term.
Awesome. Thanks.
Okay. All right. Any final comments, Mr. Reese?
Madam Vice Mayor, I think it's just an outstanding presentation, I think, to just, yeah, monumental opportunity for our fire public safety folks. It is, speaks, I think, to the value we've placed on making sure that they have a permanent home. And it's been a long time. So it's taken a long time to get here. And so through your good financial stewardship and leadership, we've been able to get there. So I'm excited for all our folks in the public safety Reno Fire to have this opportunity and to move forward on this timeline makes absolute sense.
Yeah, thank you. And then Councilmember Ebert, you were out, but we're just doing a final round of comments on the presentation we saw.
No questions in this.
Okay. All right. Well, with that, do we need a motion for you?
Yes, Madam Vice Mayor, I move to direct staff to move forward with the development of the fiscal year 2024, 25 budget based on the feedback from the board.
All right. And is there a second? All right. So we have a motion from Mr. Reese, second from Mr. Martinez. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes unanimously. We're going, we don't have ordinances, D, E, either. Another opportunity to comment on redevelopment agency issues here under item F1. Any comments? All right, seeing none. I'll close that item out and move on to, there are no G or H, I'm sorry, H, a final public comment. Madam Clerk?
Madam Vice Mayor, for the record, we did receive two letters of correspondence after 4:00 PM yesterday. They have been distributed to the Reno City Council. They were two letters of opposition. And with that, we have no additional public comment, just looking for
Just so I understand, opposition to what was in this?
I think it was for, just in general, about the budget, so.
More general, about the budget. Okay. All righty. Okay. Well, with that, and is there any final public comment you said online or in the room?
Nope.
Okay. Well, with that, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Mr. Martinez?
Second.
And Ms. Taylor. All right, we have a motion and second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you so much for participating.